As we come through bitter cold, thank you for your protection and your care for us and our lives, Lord. We, we thank you as begin, that we begin tonight that you are the reorder of those who diligently seek you. And so, Lord, I come on behalf of those here tonight and with them to seek your face, to ask for your help and for your blessing, Lord, even as we've just gotten started here in this new year, 2025, Lord, we do pray for our plans, for our hopes, even for our dreams, as a city, as citizens of Freeport, of Stevenson County, Lord, as those who are directors and chiefs for the mayor, for city manager, Lord, not to leave anyone out, but for each one sitting here tonight, that you would assist them in their work, that you would give them wisdom, that you would help them to seek you, as again, you are the reorder of those who do so. And Father, we pray that you would bless beyond even what we request of you, that you would surprise us with your blessing. And Lord, we pray for wisdom tonight, for the things on the agenda here this evening, that you would give us your help, wisdom. And Lord, we ask these things, even as you've invited us to come and ask of you, in Jesus's name, amen.
Thank you, Justin. We'll officially call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you please take the roll?
Madam Mayor Miller?
Here.
Alder Person Clem?
Here.
Monroe?
Here.
Simmons is absent. Parker?
Here.
Stacy?
Here.
Shadle?
Here.
Sanders?
Here.
And if you could please stand for the pledge allegiance led by Alderman Clem.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we had a request that if council members could please remember to speak into their microphones, it's difficult sometimes for the audience to hear. So we will move on to item number one, which is the approval of the agenda. Staff has requested the removal of eight and 23 for a later date, and there is also nothing to discuss on item number 30, so we will remove that. With that, is there a motion to approve?
Some more.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Clem, seconded by Alderman Sellers. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
That's seven to one, that passes.
Six.
Two, two nays.
Okay, sorry. Six to two.
Five, two.
Okay, five to two.
Did he also say 30?
I did, yes.
You said 30s.
Thirty, because there wasn't anything that was brought up for discussion. We normally have the executive session just as a standing in case something comes up, but there wasn't anything that was discussed, so I just, just put that out there for removal of, just to keep things clean. Item number two is approval of the minutes from the regular meeting on January 6, 2025. Is there a motion to approve?
Some more.
Second.
We have a motion made by Alderman Sellers, seconded by Alderman Parker. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That's seven to one, that passes.
Six.
Two, two nays.
Okay, sorry. Six to two.
Five, two.
Okay, five to two.
Did he also say 30?
I did, yes.
You said 30s.
Thirty, because there wasn't anything that was brought up for discussion. We normally have the executive session just as a standing in case something comes up, but there wasn't anything that was discussed, so I just, just put that out there for removal of, just to keep things clean. Item number two is approval of the minutes from the regular meeting on January 6, 2025. Is there a motion to approve?
Some more.
Second.
We have a motion made by Alderman Sellers, seconded by Alderman Parker. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. Public comments? I don't believe there's any. Darren, can you take a look quick? Is there any public comments?
Nope.
Nope, okay, thank you. Item number four is the presentation of the year in review. Director Bridge.
Good evening, council. As I shuffle my papers around, I just want to start off by saying that the numbers we are going to see tonight, the accomplishments that are put forward on these slides are number one, only a portion of what gets done on a daily basis by our amazing staff. And number two, these are simply numbers, and again, simply words on a screen, whereas the things that go on on a daily basis take a lot of time, a lot of effort, and I know certainly on behalf of all of our staff, a lot of pride goes into what is presented here. So we'll start, as I, there we go. We'll start with the street department of Public Works. In a record-setting 2024, crews laid 15,221 tons of hot mix asphalt, paving over seven and a half miles of streets. These streets completed by city crews included Oak Avenue, State Street, Chicago Avenue, Iroquois Street, Quail Ridge Drive, Sioux Drive, Dirk Drive, Coats Street, Yellowstone Court, Clinton Place and Street, and Salem Court. One of the strategic goals for Public Works is to implement the street improvement plan by paving eight miles of street per year using data including traffic count and condition of the street, curb, approaches, water, sewer, and storm mains to plan each replacement project. Crews also plowed 10,471 miles of roads in 2024. 319 lots were mowed around the city. Forty-three city-owned lots were mowed weekly. Over 100 service cut repairs were managed, and 4,566 calls from residents were fielded by Public Works. The street department is in charge of many aspects of this city. Crews were able to remove a total of 261 dead and dangerous trees and plant 108 healthy trees with the help of the yield program. 150 stumps were ground throughout the year. The department handled a total of 78 dog-related calls through animal control, which important detail, our animal control officer was on medical leave for a portion of last year. Crews also fixed 15 overhead lights around the downtown area, put up flags in a timely manner for all necessary holidays, and put up and took down 61 Christmas decorations. One more thing before I ask Darren if he has anything else to add. One of the other strategic goals was to improve Public Works' wage structure to increase recruitment and retention, and I believe that was done in 2024. Darren, is there anything else you'd like to add for that section?
No, sir.
Is there anything from council?
Yeah.
Alderman Sanders?
I'm sorry. You, are you conducting?
Go ahead.
Okay. I have a, I have a question maybe too, in succession, in succession. That means I don't have to
Come on, go ahead.
Omit, omit my, my follow-through. Your name is Director Bridges, right?
Bridge, yes, sir.
Yes, sir. I must not have been here when you were appointed as Director Bridge, and with that appointment, don't do that, don't do that, and with that appointment that you've been appointed to, I, I never understood your job description exactly. What is the full scope of your job description?
Alderman Sanders, this isn't on topic.
No, it isn't. It's just, I'm, I'm looking for the qualification for the annual report that is being made, and that's why I'm, I'm the council, you're not the council, I'm asking him questions.
Yeah, I'm just trying to help you stay on track.
Well, well, I am on track. I know that I'm on track. And the thing is, if I don't know who you are, I don't know if you eligible or legally eligible to be making any kind of annual report, because I had not seen your, your personnel file nor your job description. And so you're standing here giving us analytics and reports about what is going on throughout the city. That is what I'm understanding as I listen to you. So until I do, I'm just trying to find out whether or not what you're saying is relevant at this point, and who gave you the, what department are you in, first of all? Who is your supervisor manager, or you're just a director? Okay.
Director Bridge?
I'm part of the communications department, communications director, and this is off-topic, so you and I-
No, it's not off-topic, because if it's-
You and I may speak after the meeting.
It will state that you're communicate, you're a director of communication. It does not state that. It just says, Director Bridges. That's all it says. Okay?
So, the agenda item that we're talking about right now is the year in review. It's being presented by Director Bridge. Certainly Alderman, so that's the topic there. If Alderman Sanders, if you have questions about how Director Bridge was hired, his qualifications, all that sort of stuff, that is something that should be handled offline, you know, or at a separate meeting, you know, when we can put it on as an agenda topic there. But the, the topic for right now is the presentation of the year in review. That is the topic that's on.
Yeah, but it still doesn't say that he's qualified or eligible to do such a reporting.
And, and that's not what we're, that's not what the agenda topic is about.
So I can get any Joe blow off the street to give an annual report?
Well, he, he is an employee of the city that is serving in the role of communications director.
That's vague, very vague.
And certainly if you want his qualifications, that is something that we can, but that is a different topic.
So how many positions is, that he holds within the city?
He holds one, one position. He's the communications director.
Okay, okay.
Okay, would you like to proceed with your presentation, please? Alderman Monroe, did you have-
Actually, she had her hand up first. I'll let Alderman, Stacy.
The 15,221 tons of HMA laid, did that include the program with Avery Harrell?
Darren?
No, it did not. That was only what the Public Works crew themselves laid on the street reconditions. The material they're talking about is hot patch asphalt that we, we make, we don't buy. This is purchased hot mix that goes on new streets only, so Avery's numbers are not in there, and I would have to consult with Pat Ingram to get the, the tons that we had from them. I know we had it calculated, I just don't believe it's in the presentation.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Darren, but this also talks about just city crew stuff, not Adams Avenue, so to speak?
Correct. This is just city numbers that were derived from the projects that we did, and all the numbers that you'll see in this presentation were provided by the departments themselves to Brian for the, for the annual report.
Thank you.
I withdraw.
Okay. Go ahead, Director.
All right, thank you. There we go, okay. The water and sewer department, still with Public Works. Phase one of the wastewater treatment plant upgrades continues to expedite the entire project. Lead service line replacement phase three is wrapping up, and phase four is in the planning stage. Freeport was presented the Gold Water Ambassador Award in 2024. The treatment plant team has maintained water chemistry to EPA standards, helping to provide a safe source of drinking water. In 2024, water and sewer crews responded to 35 water main breaks. The team also installed 10 new fire hydrants around the city and assisted with 490 lead service line replacements. 12 miles of sewer main were cleaned, and 10 sewer main slash lateral repairs were executed throughout the year. On average, these crews received 20 Julie's requests per day. Once again, Darren, if there's anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, I would just like to point out here, the average number of Julie's per day is a lot, and it takes up a lot of crew time to do the Julie's, to do the research, and to go out and actually mark them. That's a very high number, which shows the amount of construction that's going on in Freeport between repairs, and, you know, Julie's are called in for various items, but that is a big number. A lot of that has to do with the surf internet project that is providing low-cost internet around the city of Freeport that's being built out. That's a $15 million infrastructure project.
Let's not spend that. It's not low.
Okay. Alderman Sanders?
Sorry. Yeah, to mention Julie's and how the personnel or is tied up with all of these Julie's. The Julie's is just water and sewer? Is that what it is? How many people needs to be on that task to do those, those particular Julie's? Do you need a, you need a construction crew to go out and do Julie's? Do you need that to even do waters, or water or sewer? You need, you need a crew to do that?
With the amount of Julie's that we've been getting, it usually takes two to three of our staff members to be able to go out and locate and mark Julie's out. It's not every day. We try to concentrate it into segments, but it does eclipse a lot of time, because you actually have to do the research on each street and, and, and get the measurements and the calculations to be able to set those points based on the way the city system is.
Okay, well, I understand that part, but my point, my thing is, does it require many personnel staff to go out and do Julie's?
Two to three.
Go ahead, Director.
All right.
I'm sorry.
Madam Mayor, is it, is it possible to get the IT department to display the board? The people at home are texting, asking for it to be displayed. They can't see it, for whatever reason.
Hey, keep, keep going, Director.
In case you couldn't hear, he said it, it shows it's displaying. I will, I will continue for the time being, but Mayor, stop me if you need. Before I move on from water and sewer, a couple highlights from their strategic goals was to secure funding for well number 12. That happened. Implement phase one of the wastewater treatment plan improvements and plan for future phases of the wastewater treatment plan improvements. That is happening as we speak. We will move on to community and economic development. The improvements made throughout 2024 to the rental registration process highlighted a busy year for community and economic development. The team implemented new software in the form of Toleme rental registration to give both landlords and the city access to more features to help make renting a more successful endeavor in Freeport. To keep all parties accountable, fees were also increased for non-compliant landlords. In addition, staff made it possible for contractors to now complete registration or license renewal online, a process that previously required a trip to City Hall. Another exciting development has been the ability to incorporate low-income homes into the land bank for the first time since 2020. This process ends with dilapidated homes being refurbished and getting a facelift in order to avoid demolition. The team also distributed $19,251 through the facade improvement grant, including $15,000 to the Freeport Art Museum for their move downtown. 765 building permits were issued in 2024. 5,144 code enforcement activities were completed, as well as 23 new chronic nuisance cases and 51 total demolitions. Before I open it up, Director Duckman spoke on this not too long ago, the strategic goals. Expanding enforcement time for the code enforcement team. Over 5,000 activities related to code enforcement, whether it be meetings, whether it be out on the street. Increasing penalties and streamlining injunctive release process for issues like tree removal, tree removal and trash cleanup. Maybe Director Duckman, is there anything happening on that end, or was it just increasing penalties for landlords?
Excuse me, are we speaking on the, specifically the tree removal and?
It says for tree removal and trash cleanup, and I do know that trash cleanup has been a hot topic.
Yes, so we've worked on a couple different ways. One, one major way we've accomplished that is working with our Public Works team. You know, once we're getting chronic nuisance activities, or getting a property into chronic nuisance, or through proper notice, we're, we're working better to clean up properties that have had, have been habitual dumping grounds, et cetera.
To continue, continue funding and implementation of the demolition and blight reduction program. Facilitate art museum transition to new location. All these things were worked on in 2024. Before I move on, I'll take a pause.
Alderman Stacy?
Yes, I would like to know if all letters have been sent out, or if letters have been sent out to all landlords pertaining to registering their property?
They have not been sent out yet. We had a, I met with them or talked to them last week, and we're using a, a company that's, basically, we send them the addresses to send out these mailers, and they had some issues on their end, technical issues on getting the letter out. So we've been working with them for the better part of a month, working through those technical issues. We usually have good success working with that company. They do our water bills and other, other billing or other mailers that we have. It's just for some reason, I know that our IT department's worked tirelessly with them to try to get that resolved, so it should be sent out soon, and, you know, obviously, InfoSend sends their regrets, but we've been working really hard with them to try to get through it. But we're right there, so that's my-
Is it possible for the council to get an update?
Yeah, absolutely. I can give an update next, at our next council meeting. That'd be, that'd be perfect. Alderman Monroe?
What's the estimation of how many people are registered versus who are not?
My estimate is there's 11, 1100 registered, and it's rounding off, and that there should be right, right around 3,000 properties registered. That's, and that's typical, we've typically had right around 1100 properties register in the last three years, and using Toleme, which was a major success and breakthrough for us to not only, you know, for the city to kind of put all the data in one place, but it also kind of helps, it's also completely helped us identify who's out there that hasn't registered. So my estimation is, is there's 1,900, 1,900 properties that need to register, that are not registered. Go ahead, Director.
Oh, sorry.
Another one?
Follow-up. And, and how many fines have been sent out since you took office?
We've not sent, I, I can't give you that number. I, I will get you that number. I can email it to you.
And it's just to the registration, nothing, no other fines?
Correct. I, I'm, I'll be honest with you, I can get you that number next week, but in my opinion, it's low, if any. And coming into it, our biggest concern, when I came into this process and was talking with, first I was talking to City Manager Bukas, then talking with City Manager Boyer, our biggest concern was, if we're sending out fines for not registering, how do you know somebody's not a registered rental? You know, if you were to drive down one block in Freeport, and you say, is that person registered, is that, should that person be registering? You know, if we're going to be fair, and I said this to Manager Bukas, and I'm saying this, continuing to council as well as Manager Boyer, is saying, well, before we really start, you know, enforcing our rental registry with these fines, we, to be fair, we should really know who should be registering. And we call that, and, and we worked with Toleme, and when we selected Toleme in April of 24, one of the major things I said to them was, I really want to identify who should be registered so I can know who to actually find. Because otherwise, you know, you're, and when I told you, we identified 1,900 properties we think should register. Without that software, how do we know who to, how do we know who should be fined? I, I'm asking, you know, that's a legitimate point. How do we know? You know, we, we're going off of an old list, and it's saying, hey, we need to take care of this, and I'm like, well, we need some technology to help us along to say who should be registered, who should we be holding accountable. Alderman Stacy?
Are you secure now in knowing who should be registered or who isn't?
I, yes, yes. We have a much better picture of that, yes. And that's where I said that we're, there's three, roughly 3,000 properties that should be registered. We have 1,100 that are currently registered, and there's a 1,900 properties that should be registered. So, yes, I feel like we have a much better picture. Alderman Sanders?
How effective are we collecting data on these particular registries? What kind of mechanism do we have in place that we total up registered and non-registered? What do we have in place right now without going out to survey the community or whatever the case, because this is not the first time that this subject came, comes up? So what kind of mechanism or data that we have retrieved to make these, these determinations? Because right now, from what I'm hearing, we're not trying to be competent enough to go and find out these kinds of things. In other words, the data is there. What are, what measures are we using to implement this or retrieve it? That's my question.
So it's a good question. Couple things there. That question was posed to me, and I had the fun job of solving it. And so what we did, my team and I, and also the help of IT department, so I'm, want to make sure I include them, we got together, started looking into this and trying to answer that question. How do we know who, who, who is not registered and should be? How do we, like, you, you're a rental property, because when you drive by a house, you can't always, you can't tell if it's a rental property. You just, it's, you can't. It looks like a house. So the answer, so we came and we, we did research on different, different software, different companies that were specializing in this data, because you're asking about data. And so the key here is, we came up with, we, we started, we, we ended up selecting Toleme, and that was approved by council in April of 24. But what Toleme does is, it mines the data from different sources, and is, for example, one excellent item that it does is, it's going to take essentially, let's just say from a tax assessor, it's going to look through all the properties in the city of Freeport, and then it's going to say, okay, where is the site address, you know, different than the property address? So if you're sending your tax bill, if, if the tax bill doesn't go to the same as the house, that flags it as a potential rental. So that's one, that's one of many flags that are being used. It, it also can work through water bills, and it can flag suspect, we, the data calls it a suspected rental. So that software, when we ended up having that, that is how we said, okay, to answer your second part of the question is, okay, well, now we know who we need to go after, or how, you know, we, first we have to identify, and then we need to know how to go after. And then the go-after part, Alder Person Stacy is correctly asking me, hey, when are these letters going out? So we know that these letters have to go out to say the deadline for registration is April 1 of 2025. And at that point, after due notice, if a property owner doesn't say, hey, you know what, that's not a rental property, I, my son lives there, or it's a second house, if they could prove some sort of, you know, sending a utility bill, others prove that it's not a rental, okay, fine, it's not a rental, but the majority of these people are rentals, and they will need to register or be subject to a fine. So the letter's already written, all the addresses have been compiled, we're just working with the, we're working with a consultant, a company that actually does the mailing, actually stuffs the letters, actually mails out the letters, and that's when I was telling Alder Person Stacy that it's taken them long, much longer than usual to actually get the letters mailed out. So.
Okay, all right.
Go ahead, Director.
Thank you. Our next section is human resources, and I know Kim isn't here tonight physically, but if you have any questions, she's happy to answer them through email. In 2024, the city had 196 employees throughout many departments, City Hall 24, Police Department 65, Fire Department 49, Public Works Street Department 17, Water and Sewer Department 24, and the library 17. Over the course of the year, 53 new hires were managed with- Over the course of the year, fifty three new hires were managed with thirty seven separations and four retirements. I move on. The Clerk's Office. The Clerk's Office managed one hundred and thirty six resolutions in twenty twenty four, a thirty seven percent increase from twenty twenty three and a sixty eight percent increase from twenty twenty two. One hundred and sixty four FOIA requests were received, a forty three percent increase from twenty twenty three. Licenses for the following were processed, thirty six video gaming licenses, sixty four liquor licenses, thirty nine tobacco and vape licenses, and eleven food truck licenses. In twenty twenty four, the Clerk's Office processed forty one special event permits and attended and managed the agenda for sixty four meetings. I move on. The Police Department, I want to start with their strategic goals. Increase police force census and implement proven strategies for reducing crime, including a three-pronged staffing approach that includes community service officers, law enforcement, and social workers to reduce crime. Hire and retain a diverse team to reflect the community we serve. Deploy more technology to reduce gun violence and improve the efficiency of the police force. Twenty twenty four saw the Freeport Police, Police Department continue to hire new officers, which allowed for the re-establishment of positions like the K nine officer, general case detective, school resource officer, telecommunications supervisor, and administrative lieutenant. In total, eighty two firearms were recovered as a result of police investigations. Four thousand four hundred and fifty seven police nine one one calls were received. One thousand five hundred and thirty three arrests were made and one thousand eight hundred and eighty four traffic citations were written. Four hundred and eighty five pounds of prescription drugs were collected and taken in for disposal. Just last month in December, seventeen kids were taken on a shopping spree for shop with a cop and the FOP Lodge sponsored a family of four children who lost their father to gun violence. Fifty six Neighborhood Watch meetings were hosted and the department continues to offer a civilian police academy. If there's anything you'd like to add, Chief, you're more than welcome to.
No, thank you.
I move on. The Fire Department. With six new firefighters joining the department, crews had a busy and successful twenty twenty four. They responded to and investigated an estimated ninety five fires where flames were present. More than four hundred fire inspections were conducted to ensure safety in commercial and residential buildings. Nineteen fire drills were, were held at schools and multi-unit apartment buildings. Two hundred and eighty eight fire alarms were installed in one hundred and fifteen homes in the city, a service that is free to all residents. Department highlights include the revival of National Night Out in collaboration with the police to bring the community together. A new fire engine was delivered and is now stationed near Adams Avenue. And the Emergency Telephone Systems Board approved the purchase of a complete VHF radio network replacement. This project would have a total cost of more than one hundred and twenty thousand dollars, but is being completed at no cost to the city. Once again, Chief, if you need to add anything, feel free.
So yes, thank you. So when we talk about two hundred and eighty eight fire alarms installed, it's actually smoke detectors that are received from um Red Cross and then they're installed by the firefighters in to the hundred and fifteen homes.
Thank you. We move on to the Freeport Public Library. Their goals, to launch the Arts and Culture Commission, which I believe happened, support cultural festival and events, sorry, support cultural and cultural festival events to engage and build connections among diverse groups. A major highlight of the library every year continues to be the intent, the attendance of the summer reading program. In twenty twenty four, four hundred and ninety eight children and teens registered, with two hundred and seventy four completing the program's goals such as reading sixty books and more. The program doesn't just get children to read, however. From June third to August tenth, the library offered one hundred and forty one programs as part of summer reading. Six thousand and forty eight children, teens and adults attended, an increase of twenty five percent from twenty twenty three. This number sets a new mark for one of the library's most po, popular programs. Throughout the year, one hundred and seven thousand five hundred and eight books were circulated along with twenty one thousand five hundred and thirty one digital materials, a total of three hundred and forty four youth prog, programs tallied an attendance of seventeen thousand and twenty six, a total of one hundred and nine adult programs tallied an attendance of one thousand two hundred and seventy one. There are four thousand five hundred and sixty eight active library cards. Twenty seven public computers occupy both floors of the library. Nine thousand five hundred and six computer sessions were logged in twenty twenty four. Forty, sorry about that screen. There we go. Forty three thousand seven hundred and twenty eight visits were paid to FreeportPublicLibrary.org. The meeting rooms were used four hundred and fifty times while the study rooms were used four, four hundred and fifty six times. And in twenty twenty four, one hundred and sixty five notarizations were completed. Once again, uh I forget your last name, Director Hovindes, okay. I will continue.
Hold it, hold it.
Oh.
Yeah.
Aldrin Sanders.
Yeah, um, question about, you know, uh, yeah, okay, she's sitting here and she probably can give me more insight on how books are acquired and, and how, and uh, and do we make requests, recommendations on books, categories or cla, uh, classifications and things of this nature? How do we proceed to put more books in our library than what we have? Cause I don't know if they're selected or chosen or they're made by request from the citizens of the community.
It's both. So anybody can make a recommendation for adding books to the collection. And we often do add the books when they're requested. We just don't get that many of them. But we do have a collection development policy that we follow that's implemented by the Board of Trustees. And then all of, we have, we have two main staff members that pick all of the items in the collection. And then uh we do have rules and policies in place for where they go in the collection. And a lot of that is based on cataloging rules, which are associated with our library consortium. And we have one hundred and thirty eight libraries that are in the same consortium, following the same rules of where to put things. But we also have flexibility to create our own section. Like this year, we created an urban fiction section with grant money and we were able to purchase about two hundred and fifty books for that, specifically for that collection. And that, you know, did that help answer your question?
Yes, it did, absolutely did. Because I will look into the exploration of looking at those catalogs again.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. We move on to the Department of Finance. The Finance Department prepared and assisted auditors during the twenty twenty three financial audit process, resulting in a clean opinion from the auditors. The twenty twenty five balanced spending plan was approved by council. The team also participated in the Career Tech Job Shadow Program. In twenty twenty four, three thousand nine hundred and sixteen vendor payments were processed, five thousand two hundred and three paychecks for an average of two hundred employees for the year, one hundred and forty new water and sewer accounts per month, one hundred and fifty five disconnects per month, and they issued an average of eleven thousand four hundred and ninety water bills per month. Good, okay, we'll move on.
Hold it.
Hold on, Sanders.
Yeah, I just wanted to understand uh the hundred and forty uh new accounts and what are those accounts? And uh, and what, what are the purpose of a hundred and forty some accounts like that? I know you probably have a um, uh, an answer for that already. But the thing is, I'm not aware of what the purpose of all of those accounts are for.
So the hundred and, that pertains to water and sewer accounts. So new renters moving in, people moving around town. So we consider that in, uh, or moving into town. They have a new account set up for water sewer. So that could be either they moved within town. That's still a new account at a new address. So they could be either locally moving around in Freeport or coming out of town, moving into town.
Thank you.
I'll move on. IT, information technology. Two hundred and fifty four total work tickets were processed in twenty twenty four. The department also replaced eighteen computer workstations. They worked extensively on cleaning data for the new Toleme rental registration and planned a twenty twenty five migration to Office three six five. Throughout the year, three thousand seven hundred, three thousand and seven hundred network level attacks were prevented and five hundred ninety five thousand eight hundred and eighty two emails were scanned and archived.
Who's protecting our system? Who's protecting our system uh throughout the city when, when the city is um responsible for all t, technology that is acquired by the city? Who's responsible for those kinds of a task?
Director Sutman can come up here if he wants, but the simple answer to your question is, our information technology team protects city staff. They do not protect residents, so to speak. I don't know if that answered your question.
No, it doesn't.
Okay.
Yeah, I, 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 I was looking for another angle.
Okay.
Okay, I wasn't looking for that particular uh, uh, information.
Sure, I, I misunderstood the question.
Well, no, no, you assumed that I, I may have said something that triggered that. But uh, yeah, but when we're, when we're talking about attacks on this, the attacks that uh, that the internet or the technology softwares and things like that is being attacked throughout the city, who is responsible for those kinds of things when we have a hiccup in our system that violates all of the, I, I don't know if we had any successful attacks because there are always someone out there attacking the system. Have we been able to divert any of those kinds of attacks from it being uh placed in our system and corrupting our system? Have we been able to, to do that?
To my knowledge, we haven't had any network malware attacks since we've had an IT department. All the attacks are sent back either by IT staff or our software and hardware appliances are built for that.
Okay, yeah, okay, that sounds good. I just wanted to see who was attacking, uh, uh, who was covering for all of these attacks that we're getting, you know, throughout the city. So it's good to know that we have someone or some uh technical specialist that is taking care of those issues. Alright, thank you.
And we will finish with communications. The uh strategic goals for communications include making bilingual communications available for all key documents and outreach efforts. I can speak directly on that. As far as the website goes, we continue to find ways to be more ADA compliant and part of ADA compliance includes uh making things on the website bilingual. We are still putting effort into that. We have seen a success in creating bilingual communications as far as newsletters and a few graphics. It does take time, however, uh, being a one-person department, I can say that I am getting better at it and uh it will only get better from here. Expand city participation in community events to increase visibility.
Hold it. Are you finished? Were you finished?
I pass it back to Mayor.
Can, can he finish his presentation on that?
Yeah, I did, I thought he was done.
Go ahead.
Sorry about that. Uh, expand city partici, participation in community events to increase visibility and improve connections with residents. I got here in April and since that point, we have attended, if not all, most large community events with the goal of speaking to residents and hearing their concerns face to face uh in an environment where uh it's not as formal. And I believe that the numbers, which I don't have in front of me, but the numbers that we got from these different events just shows that being at those events is very important. Uh, and then finally, improve storytelling and data sharing efforts to better highlight the progress being made in Freeport. I believe that one speaks for itself. The city posted three hundred and seventy one times on Facebook in twenty twenty four. The city's page reached seventy four hundred Facebook followers, which is a twenty three percent increase from twenty twenty three. Three hundred and eighty four thousand three hundred accounts viewed city posts throughout the year, a one hundred and fourteen percent increase in visibility. Sixty eight press releases were sent, a four hundred and sixty seven percent increase from twenty twenty three. And a major step taken in twenty twenty four was beginning to produce highlights after each city council meeting.
Hold on, Sanders.
Are we set up for comments from the general public? And not only the general public, but the city staff and people of that nature? Are we set up to make comments so we can uh respond to whatever it is that is uh injected into our media accounts and things of that nature? Are we on the verge of doing all of those things?
So I believe you're speaking about Facebook because all the other media accounts that we have don't allow for comments.
Okay.
For Facebook, the topic was brought up in December and then two weeks ago. And at this time, we are choosing to review what we have put forth and uh review it until we come up with a better solution. At this time, at this time, comments are not allowed.
Okay, and are we gonna increase the, the staff in that department area to help in the process of mi, mitigating all kinds of uh communications, media, uh information and anything like that that's gonna help you to uh improve your, your work status there?
At this time?
Yeah.
The, the goal is not to increase staff. We do have options for internships here and there. We have not pursued them yet. This position was created, I believe, back in twenty twenty one. It's still a fairly new department. The numbers speak for itself. I do believe that the communication that we have put forth uh improves our transparency at every level. And uh whether or not we choose to pursue more staff members for the communications team, that is not our goal at this time.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm looking at that, I'm looking at that chart, right? Not the chart, but that information chart you have up there. Who's, who's doing the analyticals and where, where's that information is coming from? That uh, that I'm s, looking at at this current time? And we talk about transparencies and press releases and things like that. Who's handling all of these objectives that, that I see, especially that analytical chart up there? I'm looking at this chart and I'm like, where did, where are you getting that information from? Because I like to know. Yeah, I like to know where it's coming from.
That, that is all done in my office by looking at a screen and seeing the stuff that we have done. I, I counted those numbers by hand. It's not a big enough number to where I have to use any software. The Facebook followers accounts it for me, the accounts viewed, that counts it for me. The press releases, I counted that myself. We had twelve in twenty twenty three. And then the numbers in the chart, I counted those by hand. Those were simple, right off of Facebook.
Hold on, Stacey, did you have something?
No.
Hold on, Mr. Monroe.
I, I would like uh to ask Attorney Zito to look into the actual blocking of. I, I would like uh to ask attorney Zito to look into the actual blocking of any and all comments on uh government platforms. I, I believe the uh Supreme Court, as well as several other federal courts, have ruled very clearly on this. And if, if this is our position, you know, I, I, I think it's, it's behoove of us to, to double check that this is okay. Clearly, the director doesn't understand what the rules are, the city manager doesn't. But that's something that's, i- it's very clear. There's a couple of cases, and this is just quick um search on, on Google. It's no, by no means legal, you know, but it's very clear. Several people have filed lawsuits against public officials and municipalities. And uh it has generally been ruled that you cannot block opinions just because you feel like it. If it is vulgar, if it's offensive, it's threatening, then that makes sense. But that line is pretty well laid out by the Supreme Court.
Okay, so are you making a motion to task him to do this?
Yes.
Is there a second to do that?
Second.
Okay, so if it be the will of the council for Alderman Monroe's motion, seconded by Alderman Stacy, to task the attorney to look into that, is there any discussion concerning that topic itself?
Madam Clerk, yeah, uh Director?
I'll, I'll discuss it. This topic was brought up, um as you are very well aware. My view on it is that we need to open it. It needs to be reviewed further as to whether or not that's the best option based on the discussion we had on this floor among these individuals here. So we were involved, all of us, in that decision to discuss it further, which led to a, hey, let's review it further. As far as the legality, that does fall under Aaron or Attorney Zito. As far as the knowledge on my end, I have seen many communities put forth guidelines to where no comments at all are allowed. And I have reached out to them specifically and they have permission from their attorney.
So we have a motion on the floor. If there's no further discussion on that.
Madam Mayor, I'll, I'll withdraw that motion um on the grounds that I'll seek other means to address it.
Alderman Stacy.
I withdraw.
Okay, is there any further discussion uh concerning the year-end review?
I appreciate your time.
Thank you. We could have the lights back on, we'll move on to item number five, which is the consent agenda. The consent agenda is considered to be routine in nature and acted as one motion unless a member of council would like to have something removed for further discussion. The consent agenda consists of approving to receive and place on file the minutes of boards and commission meetings from the liquor commission meeting December twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four. The building permit reports, the police department reports, the fire department reports dated December, two thousand and twenty-four. Also is a semi-annual report to the city manager from July to December, two thousand and twenty-four. Approval of the finance bills payable in the total of four million nine hundred and ninety-five thousand two hundred and ninety-eight dollars sixty-one cents. And the approval of payroll for pay period ending July eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five in the total of seven hundred and six thousand six hundred and two dollars seventy-one cents. Also is the finance report, the cash and investment reports for November, two thousand and twenty-four, and the adoption of resolution twenty twenty-five eleven for uh resolution requesting temporary closure of streets for the annual Memorial Day Parade. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Some move.
Second.
The motion made by Alderman Sellers, seconded by Alderman Shadle. Madam Clerk, could you please take the role?
That should probably be a roll, shouldn't it? Sorry. Clem.
Aye.
Monroe.
Aye.
Simmons.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Stacy.
Aye.
Shadle.
Aye.
Sanders.
Aye.
And Sellers.
Aye.
Uh, the consent agenda is approved, eight to zero.
Thank you. Item number six is a reappointment, could you please read this?
Reappointment of Steve Cox to the board of the Northwest Illinois Enterprise Zone for a three-year term effective through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-seven.
Mr. Cox has asked that his name be pulled for consideration. Madam Clerk, could you please uh read for the record his statement?
Mayor Miller, I am requesting that you please withdraw my name for consideration for the city's appointed enterprise zone seat. I understand that this appointment has been the source of some disagreement and I do not want to be the source of any further division on the council. I would, however, ask that you please make clear to council that the apparent origin of the discussion, a courtroom photograph indicating that I was somehow a participant in the petition controversy is, in that respect, a complete misrepresentation. My purpose in attending court that morning, as I do quite regularly, was to cover some routine probate matters. I actually had no idea the petition hearing, which was scheduled for the following day, was set for consideration. Being pulled into a political controversy was certainly not on my agenda when I went to the office that morning. Thank you for the original consideration for the position. It has been an honor to serve on the E-zone committee for the last eight years and I will continue to support those efforts in any capacity that I can.
This is exactly the kind of thing which will continue to happen if we create an issue out of every unsupported accusation that comes along. Now we have a subject expert, the subject matter expert, Steve Cox, who has donated his time, as this is not a paid position, in an effort to help this community, who does not want to be pulled into another baseless argument just because someone tagged him on a Facebook post. This will continue to happen as long as every unfounded accusation is allowed to disrupt, disrupt the business of our city. We are going to lose more and more people who have historically been willing to participate on our boards and commissions, who do not want to be pulled into the chaos that now surrounds this council. And when we all, and when all we have left to choose from are people who want to pull us down to their level, where does this leave the city with empty seats? Thank you, Steve, for your eight years. We'll move on to item number seven, which is the second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five oh two. Could you please read this for the record?
Ordinance authorizing Northern Illinois Gas Company, doing business as Nikor Gas Company, to construct, operate, and maintain a gas distributing system in and through the city of Freeport.
Manager Boyer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As discussed at the committee of the whole in the last meeting, uh Nikor has brought forth a, a, a request to renew the uh agreement with the city of Freeport. In past years, uh we have pretty much covered the cost of all city buildings, but we have included the library uh in this particular agreement to move forward that will provide us with um decades of um uh gas for heat uh at no cost to the city. So staff requests uh council move forward with this um, with this agreement.
Thank you, is there any further discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the role.
Clem.
Aye.
Monroe.
Aye.
Simmons.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Stacy.
Aye.
Shadle.
Aye.
Sanders.
Aye.
And Sellers.
Aye.
The ordinance passes eight to zero.
Item number nine is the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five oh four, could you please read this?
Ordinance regarding Part fourteen, Building and Housing Code, Chapter fourteen forty-two point fourteen, increasing plumbing permit fees and adding Chapter fourteen seventy-seven point fourteen, solar interconnection types.
Thank you, Director Duckman.
Last, last cow that we had, the committee of the whole meeting in January, we talked about part of this uh ordinance and that part of the ordinance discussed uh the plumbing permit fees. So just to kind of, for a refresher here, we talked about how water and sewer service installs would be, go from fifty dollars to a hundred and fifty, so from fifty to a hundred and fifty, which is a hundred dollar increase. And then we also talked about how um installing a fixture or requiring a new water line would go from thirty dollars to a hundred dollars. And uh for a refresher here, again, we talked about how when we're doing our water and sewer service installs, it's requiring uh time from our public works team, our waters, our, our water superintendent actually having to inspect these services. And also um for the water services not requiring um an actual service line that's going to our asset, which is the water main, those would, would, are going from thirty dollars to a hundred dollars uh for the fact that um our consultant, uh BNF, uh com- building code services, they are upping, they've upped their prices to a hundred dollars an hour. So the idea is that staff is just doing, trying to do, to be more responsible and recuperate some of these fees and some of the time uh included there. So that's the one part of it. And where this comes from, and we, I talk about in my, in my memo, but it's also written in the ordinance is that this goes in front of our building commission. And in our last building commission meeting, um this portion was voted in favor by a vote of six to zero. Uh, the other part of it is a little more technical and it deals with uh interconnection types for uh solar. So I'll try not to get too uh technical or in the weeds here. But essentially, what was talked about at our building commission was how are we connecting? How are we requiring s- solar panel installer, solar installation companies to connect actually into the commed meter? And uh there's been some issues or, and, and it's been some contention in how they're actually doing it. And, and one of the, one of the um methodologies or one of the issues that we're having is we're requiring, you know, UL-approved uh connections. And main reason there is that uh we have some older wiring and we want to make sure that when people are in, installing the transition from the solar power back into the commed meter, we want to ensure that there's not actually damage being caused uh to the, the, the property owner. And we want to make sure that our contractors are not cutting any corners uh with there as well. And then uh they're also talking about, there's an adapter that they're putting on for the interconnection that actually connects to the existing meter. And uh another issue there is it can um impede certain driveways. We, we know that in Freeport, we're an older city and we have some smaller, tighter lots. And that if people are, for allowing um our solar contractors to just simply put on these uh meter adapters, we want to make sure that uh the, the person can now still park their cars, et cetera, and that it would actually not impede um access into their property. So that's what's before you, this went to our building commission, it was recommended for approval by a vote of six to zero. And um staff is recommending uh moving this forward.
Thank you, is there a motion to move this forward?
Some move. Second.
We have a motion made by Alderman Shadle, seconded by Alderman Sellers. Discussion, Alderman Monroe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Director Duckman, uh so I, I know that negotiations have been kind of going back and forth with s- some other city officials. Is this, is this going to cover the cost that once the pay raises go in that have been promised to them by city manager? Is that going to cover the cost of having the superintendents and others go out there?
I, I, I don't, I don't believe that was the, uh, the intent here is to help cover the cost for their time to inspect that connection. We're trying to be more responsible. Uh, one thing, one initiative that I've been working on with, with the public works department is, hey, we've, especially with sewer connections, but it's also water connections, is saying like, for example, in sewer connections, and I worked for a sanitary district of Rockford for seven years, so I have a lot of, a large body of experience in these could, uh sewer, sewer service connections, is if you don't have the Fernco connected correctly, you could have issues of infiltration in the system of stormwater and then that goes into the system and then you're actually, essentially trading stormwater. So you have a better system when you are there inspecting. So I've, I've worked with our acting director, Stieckel, to say, hey, we got to do a better job of scheduling these inspections and making sure they're there. I, I will tell you that in any time we're talking about permitting, because it's a public service, I, I don't think we're intending to recuperate all of our costs because I think that would be too, I, I think that would be injurious to our people to, you know, to truly try to incorporate every cost that's involved with an inspection. You know, a hundred dollars, going to a hundred and fifty dollars, you, I, I couldn't say that in a straight face that that would cover, you know, all the administrative time and, and, you know, a, a superintendent's time to go check it, the pictures that are taken, the documentation, et cetera. So I, I think it's just helping to inc- incorporate some of that cost.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Sanders.
Yeah, um, I'm listening to that um report that uh Alderman Monroe was giving. In addition to that, are we, the city, absorbing any of the costs for inspections? And not only that, who come up with the uh, the notion that these things needs to come, uh be applied? Who makes, who's making that decision for the increases, for the inspection for these homes when there's new water or sewer services? Who's putting this in place and how do we come up with the fees and the cost? And why is it put in place? Because you got to remember, before you uh came on board, these kinds of things were already in place. Inspections of anything was already in space, in place, but it didn't uh suffer the homeowners or, or, or whoever that's doing the work. I'm just trying to get a understanding to, when was this put in place to make these types of uh decisions, to, to, to take fees up, to charge folks and things of this nature? Additional fees to what they're already getting, they're paying for their water bills, their utility bills already. And I thought the city uh was part of the ordinance of making sure that all homes and owners had the proper hookups. I, I, I'm trying to understand this. How did we get into the business of charging folks for hooking up water services and inspections and things of this nature?
You, you are correct, this was here well before my time and more than likely since the city was incorporated, that if you have a water service or a sewer service, you need to get a permit and then pay for the permit and then uh ultimately there's an inspection. What I'm presenting to council, what I presented in the committee of the whole last week and what I'm also now putting for first reading is the reasoning behind why, the reasoning behind why staff presented to our building commission raising our sewer, water and sewer service installation when you get a permit. So if your sewer collapses and you have to call uh a company in Freeport and say, I would, I need to fix my sewer service, it's collapsed, there's currently a fee of fifty dollars. And in working with public works, saying, look, there's, we're, we're, we're spending more time improving our system, making sure that people aren't doing this under the table. You know, we're, we're stepping it up, making sure that we're there, uh we're making sure people pay the appropriate fees. In working with the, you know, with our public works department, it was saying, hey, this, this fee seems to be seems to be low, we should be incorporating some more of our fees. And I said, well, the proper way to ask for a larger permit fee is to present it to council in a committee of the whole, explain our reasoning, and then ultimately, now this is the first reading of the ordinance and now it's up to you. I mean, certainly, you could, you, you may have the position, um and I know other, other people have had the position that, you know, we need to keep permit fees low. That's an understandable position. Um, I'm just trying to present that staff has worked on this and, and we, we think it's reasonable to move it from fifty to one fifty, a hundred and fifty dollars. The building commission has a licensed plumber on, you know, we have a licensed plumber on the building commission that reviewed this, they thought it was reasonable. So uh there is some support for it other than just staff. And that's really.
Is there a program in place where it helps the homeowners to offset these uh, the, these types of increases in bills that, that's going to be due coming to them? Is there a program to help those individuals who are struggling as it, as, as already struggling to be able to go to some kind of uh office or place to try to get a lower adjustment price on these kinds of things? Because these fees, people just don't have these kinds of dollars in this current time in, in day and age, we don't, we don't have, folks don't have that. And so we're, we're nip, we're, what I'm getting at is that I feel that we're nickel and diming homeowners, pinching them for everything that we are doing. And as far as I'm concerned, as I hear what I'm hearing, what is the city doing for the homeowners who are paying their enormous amount of taxes each year to make sure that they are in compliance with the city and that? they are in compliance with the city and that they need stress level mitigation as well? What, what are we doing for the citizens here in Freeport? Cause you guys, what you saying to me, the staff, the staff or Public Works or whoever thought that was a, a great deal to increase or something to increase the cost for all the work that they're doing. You know, there was a time I, I'm like, there was a time we just did it to secure the fact that we did the work or the plumbers did the work, that they don't have to come back 10, 15, 20 years from now to repeat the same task. And, and that's what I feel that should happen when a homeowner takes his dollars and pay it out to these utility companies and plumbers and water and sewer and all these other kind of stuff. People just don't have that, that kind of budget to do that.
A water and sewer service is an expensive, horrible event that you don't want to have happen to you.
Exactly.
Nobody wants to have, nobody wants to have a water line break from the city, you know, from the service side because now you have a house without, now you have a house without water. And nobody wants a sewer service to break because you're going to have your basement full of raw sewage. It's horrible. Many people hopefully have insurance to cover that. I know it's something that is covered by some insurance companies, some aren't. So some of these horrible experiences are going to be covered by insurance. And when they're not, it's regardless of how it's handled, it's, nobody wants to deal with it. Nobody wants to have a water or sewer service go down.
Absolutely.
Now, but city staff is saying here, and the benefit we're talking about, right now the benefit costs $50 to the homeowner. And what staff is saying is we, we believe the price should be increased to 150. Again, you're voting on that and you may certainly say, you do have a strong standpoint to say, look, we're holding the line at 50. But the benefit is that when you do go through this and you have raw sewage in your basement, you have a house without water, is that you have a Public Works employee who's coming to look at that connection and is going to say the connection was done correctly so that now when, before they fill the hole or backfill the hole where the sewer connection was made, the inspection had to be done. And that homework, homeowner can rest assured that at the time the hole was backfilled, the work was done correctly because the city said it was done. Now, not accusing anybody, but cert, I'm not going to accuse any contractor, but if a contractor doesn't have that inspector there, it's essentially a check.
Absolutely.
And that's a benefit, that is a benefit to a homeowner.
I have seen jobs repeated because of poor construction work to homeowners when they have to pay double to make sure that they get the right plumber and the right inspection in there. They have to pay double duty to make these corrections. It comes from the homeowner. I have seen poor inspections, even with our own city's inspectors. We have, I have seen those kinds of things. I'm talking about my experience. And, and so these things happen and God forbid any homeowner runs into this kind of situation and have no recovery. They can't recover. That's the reason why I'm asking, is there a program that will allow homeowners to offset these types of costs because they, they can amount to thousands of dollars? If, if we're not careful about how we're going about trying to raise increases for util, for any kind of utility, it can be enormous.
Okay, so you've had three times now that you've spoken. Darren, you want to finish that?
I just wanted to state that the Public Works fees, water and sewer enterprise funds, we need to capture at least our cost on these items in order to make sure that we're not running these departments at a loss. We are only going by the codes and ordinances and for instance, a sewer lateral is owned by the homeowner from the house to the main. That is our code, right? And EPA is requiring documentation to show that we are, per our C-MOM reporting, that we are inspecting those connections and making sure we're not getting water, water infiltration into the sewer. That's just on that. We have always had cost in place to do these works. The costs that are there now are not covering the cost and per our enterprise zone to make sure that water and sewer doesn't get in the shape that it was years ago. We have to cover the cost of the work that's taken. We do have multiple trips and I will say, just in the last month, we've had two sewer repairs that had to be redone because the inspection, on the inspections, they were wrong. So the inspections are important to happen.
Alderman Stacy, you had your hand up?
Last week we spoke about $100 going from 50 to $100 fee. Was that even considered?
It's considered now. It 100, I mean, 100% considered now. If that's the motion you'd like to make, you know, staff, staff's recommending 150, but certainly you could recommend $100.
Okay, these duties that we're saying we need more money for, it's nothing that's been added to this job title. It is what it is, correct? It's, it's their duties, it's what they're hired to do.
I believe what you're asking here is the inspector that goes out and looks at the sewer connection, has their, has their job duties changed? No, they are required, that, that, that specific job duty has not changed.
So if we feel like they deserve more money for doing their duties, then should that be coming from an increase in wages from the city and not on the homeowners?
To clarify, the money doesn't go to the employee. The money goes to the utility company, the sewer or water department, whichever, whichever one it is, it goes as a fee, just like everything else that goes back into our, our general fund and our account, our accounts. It's a, it's a permitting fee is what it is.
To recoup some cost.
It has nothing to do with any payment to any water and sewer employee whatsoever.
Attorney Zito, did you want to add to it as well?
No, well, I was just going to try to, of the fact that, you know, I think the, the permit fee increase that's being requested or being proposed, it's just like with anything else, you know, over time, this fee hasn't changed probably for over a decade, if not more. It's been $50 for the, for the inspection permit fee, right? Well, over the course of time, inflation, this, that, the cost of everything, whether, you know, people get raises over time, you know, cost of paper costs more, cost of ink costs more, whatever it is, costs more, right? 10 years later now. And so every so often, whether it's, you know, permit fees or the cost of a hamburger when you go to the store, things get more expensive because, you know, inflation. So I think that's all they're looking to do is to try to recoup some costs because it's, you know, it hasn't been, the fee's been the same for the last god knows how many years.
I understand that, but to go from 50 to 150, I feel it's a bit much.
And certainly as Director Duckman said, this is before the council right now for your guys' consideration. So certainly if you guys wanted change it from, deviate from staff's recommendation and take it to a different number, you guys can, can make a motion to amend it to $100 or whatever the number you guys want. And if the consensus of the council is to say, yeah, we, we think 100's better than 150, then that's how the ordinance will be amended and we'll draft it up that way and go from there.
But they didn't just pull a number out of the hat. This was an evaluation of expense and at the recommendation of the building commission. So if you want to change it, it's just, that's the recommendation that's coming forward. Alderman Monroe, did you have-
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Couple of questions, then I'd like to comment on your response. How many of these do you per, do per year? And what's the average hourly rate of the people that are going out to do these inspections?
We, excuse me, we had 40, 40 of these last year and I can get-
A rough, rough estimate.
Well, I, the only reason I'm saying I'm going to go to our Public Works team on this one is so, and to give you some background is, we will get a plumbing permit for a sewer service. My department will. And we'll say, okay, that's $50. And then what Attorney Stieckel's saying is, hey, you know, we have by our EPA permit, we've got to check that connection to our sewer system. So then he has to, we have to coordinate with him to say, okay, there's a, we have a plumbing permit for a sewer, you need to send your people out and inspect it. And the reason why I would say the hourly rate, a little bit out of my department is, when I'm calling Public Works, I'm saying, hey, we're, we're getting this, you have to, in conjunction with my department, you also have to be there. So it's, I guess, I guess, he could tell me what it would, I don't, what are your, what are your guys paying or what's the rate for inspector? He's looking it up now. I just don't know what the-
Alderman Sellers?
So, well, I'd like to make my comment, you know, $150, and you just hit where I was going with my comment. We've already charged for a lot of this because they've gotten a permit that we're now increased at the 1% of the cost. So the permit, any, anything, any work's done, driveway, any home improvement, all of that. We just voted on that within the last, what, two, three months? That's 1%. And I don't, I don't know any time that somebody goes and starts digging in your yard, working on water and sewer, that it's less than a few hundred dollars that's probably coming back to the city. And because those types of breaks, at that point where it goes back into the system, caused substantial damage to the interior of the house, they caused damage to the, there's damage into the lines going back and forth, the water and sewer. And they've already paid probably a few hundred bucks is my guess. Because I had a backup in my basement, it was easily, would have exceeded the 10 grand that I had coverage. So when you get into this, these numbers get big and it's just like another 150 bucks. Water bill's already 200. I mean, at what point, that's where Alderman Sanders was going. At what point does it make sense to say, okay, we're getting to that breaking point for a lot of the citizens in the city of Freeport? And, and once again, I'll come back to it. There's a lot, the average salary or the average income per family in this city is less than $50,000 a year, so right around 44, 45,000, I think, last time I checked. And these are going to be substantial costs to them. And that's why we end up with these houses that we have these discussions about that we're tearing down because people can't afford to fix them. They can't afford to live. And, and just throwing a number out, see, these are things that should be known. If I'm doing this 40 times per year, I should know what the cost is. And this is the difference between government and business. Business would know every single piece of this. I guarantee you Alderman Shadle goes out and does an electric job, they know how many hours, they know how many miles they drove, they know everything about it, they've estimated every piece of that. We're not leaving the city limits. So the estimation of the mileage, that's pretty minimal. But how long does it take to do the permit? How long does it take to do the, the inspection? Do I need to go back out a second time? Those are the things that we need to kind of have a basis and you should have a better idea before you come to council and say, oh, we're just going to take it from 50 to 150. That, that's a, that's $100. You know, that's a significant increase and we need to know those costs and we can't, can't just keep going back to the well and taxing the hell out of the citizens of Freeport just because we haven't done our jobs. We haven't sat down and thought this through and thought of it as a, as it's our money. And that's, that's where we're at right now. And, and I'll leave it at that.
Alderman Sellers?
In the memo, it says $100, so it was already-
I think it was an increase of $100.
Yeah.
It was an increase of $100.
So it's 150.
It's, it's to increase it to 100, it's to increase it to $150.
So instead of the 150, they did do the, the 100.
No.
No, it's an increase, what's being proposed is 150.
Oh, so the whole thing, so you want to do it 100 to make it 150?
Correct, correct.
Not just the 100.
And again, the idea here is to recuperate the Public Works Department's time that they have to go out and do the inspection.
But it's their job.
Alderman Clem?
Yeah. I'd just like to, as long as you're taking all this math into it, it makes no sense. Let's take and add the price of the employee, the price of work that's come, the price of the truck, the price of diesel, the price of tools and the price of him going there and back and going there and back. So that enters into it too. I mean, and how many years has it been since there's been an increase? So everybody sounds like they're willing to talk about something here, either talk about, we got, this is only first reading, it's going to come back again. So we got plenty of time to work with it.
Darren?
Yeah, so we didn't willy nilly throw this together. Andy Leverton and I did sit down and calculate his time and staff's time in doing this, fuel, benefits, the whole package to the utility. So yes, 150 is a little bit more than we need, but also this hasn't been changed forever and we didn't want to come back. This is not something that is annually looked at for a price. So if the council wants to change it, we're more than happy to that. But as directors and staff members, we are here to make sure that the city is covering our costs and doing the right thing for the city. And that's what we're trying to do. So if you guys want to change it to 100, so be it. We can make that work. The, the issue is, is that we do get called out to most of these places at least two times, if not three times, right? Anywhere in the city to travel, 15, 20 minutes here and there, fuel, gas, extra trips, it all adds up to the utility. And this is how we got in the situation of not being able to replace our infrastructure is the utility is actually nickel and dimed and then we don't have expenses to cover our sewer main breaks and those types of items which end up going to utility increases for everyone. So we're trying to do the responsible thing and we did put the math to it and this is our recommendation. You guys set policy, so if you want to set it lower, so be it. We'll accept it.
I would like to make a motion.
No.
Well, actually Alderman Sanders, you've already exceeded your limit of how much you can speak. So Alderman Stacy, did you have something more?
I would just like to make a motion that we take this to a flat 100, a $50 increase and not the 150 that was recommended. I'll second it.
So you want to make a motion to make the increase-
$50 increase, taking it to 100.
To make it a flat 100. Okay, so that motion is made by Alderman Stacy, seconded by Alderman Simmons?
No.
No?
Alderman Sellers.
Alderman Sellers, I'm sorry. Is there more discussion on that amendment only?
On that amendment?
On that amendment, just to the increase it to a flat 100. Alderman Simmons?
Yeah.
So I would support that. I know it needs to be increased and I understand that, but when it came to recouping costs on that system, to hunt down these landlords that won't register, that wouldn't be heard when we talked about raising that price. So the citizens deserve that same respect and we raise it just a little bit so you can get some of your money back. But some of that should be, and I hope was included in the budget for the year, that the cost of going out and inspecting for a permit. So I'm totally for the $100.
Do you have something on this motion?
Something different, right?
On this motion?
Yeah. Yeah. Who's liable to, with this notion to, to raise these rates? And, and what department? I know you say Public Works, but who, who's losing? Does the city lose anything? Because these kinds of things usually the city has budgets for. They're budgeted at the first of the year to offset homeowners. We're not doing anything to help homeowners. What we're doing is throwing them under the bus by saying, well, we're going to charge you this, this, but what are we doing for the citizens of Freeport? Because what I'm hearing is that we throwing fees out there to increase something that has been going on for decades and now all of a sudden they're looking at this, this is a surprise to a lot of the homeowners to, to give that-
Alderman Sanders, Attorney Zito wants to-
So, Alderman Sanders, so the motion that's on the floor right now is just about changing from 150 to 100?
And I say no. Period. And I was trying to give an explanation to why I was saying no for any increase because this has not been a complete study. And that's, that's my, that's my position on that subject. And I just wanted to make it clear that, just to throw that out there like that, there has not been a study for the council to even make- make that distinction of what we used to have, and what we're trying to do today, or whenever we ask...
Okay, so we've talked about this at a COW, we've got this, and it's Alderman Stacy and Alderman Sellers that have put this forward to change it to be a flat rate of a hundred. So, unless there's any more discussion on that particular piece of it, Madam Clerk, would you please take the role on the motion made by Alderman Stacy?
Clem?
No.
Monroe?
No.
Simmons?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Shadle?
No.
Sanders?
No.
And Sellers?
Aye.
Uh, we are tied at four to four. Mayor?
No.
That motion fails, four to five.
Okay, so, we'll, we're, we're back to the original of moving this forward, so are we ready to move this onto the next city council meeting?
So move.
We have that motion, so I'm in, is the discussion done, is what I mean. Darren?
Yeah. Um, you know, sitting back, so if it's, went to a hundred, we're talking about forty inspections, so it's a fifty-dollar increase, we're talking about two thousand dollars. If it went to a hundred and fifty, what are we talking about? An increase of a hundred dollars, it's thirty-seven hundred dollars, right? So, again, we did the math and the study of what it costs. The city, at the fifty-dollar rate currently, on the inspections, we don't break even on what the employee, the equipment, the inspection time that it costs. We're just trying to make the city whole, so we don't lose ground and end up in the same boat that the utility was in seven or eight years ago, when we had to do massive increases for utility rates for every person in town. This is how you get behind in your utility, and you can't afford it. So, we are, we are just trying to do the right thing for the utility and the city that owns the utility. That's what we're trying to do, is make sure that we at least cover costs of the goods and services we provide. That is our responsibility as the enterprise owner.
So, we will, you've already exceeded your...
Again, I exceeded?
You have exceeded, you've already spoken like four times.
Well, how many times does he get to speak?
As many times as I let him.
Oh, that's my point. You gotta...
Yes.
I got a problem with just what you said, and that should, and that should not affect...
He's just trying to bring clarity, Alderman, he's trying to bring clarity to your rambling.
If he can speak more than three times, then I should be able to speak just as many times.
We are, unless there's more discussion...
Yes, there is.
You have not exceeded your...
Because I, I'm not accepting his explanation. I should be able to reply back to his explanation.
Alderman Stacy, I believe you've already spoken twice.
I just need some clarity. Okay, so this is gonna move to the next...
The, the next city council meeting, the way it stands.
Okay, so what if the ones that said yes to the hundred now say no to no change at all, then we're right back where we started?
We're right where we started.
Mayor Miller's gonna, she's gonna raise it.
Who gonna do that?
You know...
Alderman Sellers, did you have something else? You haven't spoken twice.
I'm out of line.
We're gonna go to second reading.
You're done?
So, we're gonna go to second reading.
All right. Then we're gonna, we're gonna move this to second reading?
Okay.
All right, item number ten is the first reading of ordinance twenty-two-five-oh-five. Could you please read this?
Ordinance approving special use permit application at two nineteen East Stevenson Street, submitted by Michelle Davies and Jeff Schultz, to examine the special use of a B-two-two limited service business district zone property to allow restaurants, taverns, packaged liquor stores, and any other establishment selling alcoholic beverages for consumption on or off the premises, uh, section B eleven.
Director Duckman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Staff received a special use application from Michelle Davies and Jeff Schultz, uh, for their restaurant, um, and it was an application to sell alcoholic beverages at two-one-nine East Stevenson Street, excuse me, and, uh, staff brought this petition to the zoning board of appeals on January second, and it was recommended for approval of a vote of five to zero with zero abstentions. On Jan, January ninth, staff brought this to the planning commission, and it was also recommended for approval by a vote of five to zero with zero abstentions, uh, and staff, uh, in line with the zoning board of appeals and planning commission is recommending approval, but also wanted to state that, uh, per the request of the prop, the new proprietors of the business, they are requesting a suspension of the rules, so they can get moving on their liquor license.
Is there a motion to move this forward?
So move.
Second.
If a motion made by Alderman Sellers, seconded by Alderman Shadle, discussion on this ordinance? Move on to item number eleven, which is...
We were...
He wanted the rules raised.
And who made that motion?
I did.
Second.
Alderman Clem, seconded by Alderman Sellers, to suspend the rules. Suspension of the rules is non-debatable and must pass by two-thirds majority. Uh, Madam Clerk, please take the role on the suspension only.
Clem?
Aye.
Monroe?
Aye.
Simmons?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Shadle?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
And Sellers?
Aye.
The suspension of the rules passes eight to zero.
So, then now before you, council, is for the final passage of this ordinance, any further discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the role.
Clem?
Aye.
Monroe?
Aye.
Simmons?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Shadle?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
And Sellers?
Aye.
The ordinance passes eight to zero.
And item number eleven is the first reading of ordinance twenty-two-five-oh-six. Could you please read this?
Ordinance approving special use permit application at two nineteen East Stevenson Street, submitted by Michelle Davies and Jeff Schultz, to examine the special use of a B-two-two limited service business district zone property to allow restaurants with outdoor serving areas, section B ten.
Director Duckman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, um, staff received a special use application from Michelle Davies and Jeff Schultz, um, same, same proprietors of the business at two-one-nine East Stevenson Street, and what this special use was for, was to allow them to have a restaurant with an outdoor serving area, and, I put up on the screen, uh, the prior owners had a, uh, also had an outdoor, uh, serving area at their establishment. So, uh, this was brought to the, um, zoning board of appeals on January second, and it was recommended for approval with a vote of five to zero with zero abstentions, and on January ninth, it was brought before the planning commission, and it, uh, was recommended for approval by a vote of five to zero with zero abstentions, and, uh, the proprietor, the proprietors of this business are not looking to suspend the rules, it's fairly cold outside, I don't think that they plan on having any outdoor, uh, dining for a few months, so they did not recommend, they had not sought a suspension of the rules here. So, in line with the zoning board of appeals and planning commission, we are recommending moving this forward.
Motion moving forward?
So move, second.
We have a motion made by Alderman Clem, seconded by Alderman Sellers, to move this ordinance forward. Any discussion? Did you want this, you said you did not care about this being moved for, this suspension?
There's no, um, there's not been a request for suspension of the rules.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
This, this would affect me in issuing their liquor license, however, if we did the outdoor later, I'd have to issue it twice and, and redo it.
Motion to suspend the rules, Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion to suspend the rules by Alderman Monroe, seconded by Alderman Sellers?
Stacy.
Stacy? Alderman Stacy. Uh, again, suspension of the rules is non-debatable and must pass by two-thirds. Madam Clerk, could you please take the role on the suspension only?
Clem?
Aye.
Monroe?
Aye.
Simmons?
Absent.
Oh, I am so sorry. Parker?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Shadle?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
And Sellers?
Aye.
The suspension passes seven to zero.
So, then now before you, council, is the final passage of ordinance twenty-two-five-oh-six. If there's no further discussion, Madam Clerk, please take the role.
Clem?
Aye.
Monroe?
Aye.
Simmons? Well, she's still absent. Parker?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Shadle?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
And Sellers?
Aye.
And the ordinance passes seven to zero. Thank you for making my load a little easier.
Thank you. Item number twelve is the first reading of ordinance twenty-two-five-oh-seven. Could you please read this?
Ordinance approving variance application at two-oh-seven West Empire Street, submitted by Tim and Vicky Rowe, to seek relief from twelve-fifty-two-point-zero-five-F-one, to allow a front yard of less than twenty-five feet.
Thank you. Director Duckman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I'm gonna be putting up, uh, on the screen here, just some images, so we can see it a little better, what's going on here. So, staff, staff received a permit application on December thirteenth, uh, for two-oh-seven West Empire, for a front yard setback of less than the required twenty-five feet. And, um, if we scroll down here, I could show you an image of what we're talking about here. Uh, the setback that they're, uh, requesting is a two-foot setback, so, uh, right off the cuff, it sounds to be a little extreme, but, the reasoning for this, uh, front yard setback is, it's for, uh, an accessibility ramp. So, uh, staff is recommend, has put this forward on January second to the zoning board of appeals. Uh, it was recommended for approval by a vote of five to zero with zero abstentions, and at that, um, at, at that hearing, there was one neighbor who gave, uh, support for the variation. It was also, wanted to mention that this property owner has been at the same address for thirty years, and now needs accessibility into their property. Um, so, that was recommended, uh, for approval on January second. It was also recommended for approval by planning commission on January ninth, and it was recommended approval with a vote of five yays, zero nays, and zero abstentions, and in line with these recommendations, uh, staff is recommending moving this forward.
Is there a motion to move this forward?
Second.
We have a motion made by Alderman Clem, seconded by Alderman Sellers, discussion, Alderman Stacy?
Are my eyes deceiving me, or is it already done?
It, yes, and I'll, I'll give a little background, that it's already built, and, uh, the son was helping the father bring his father back home, and started construction so that he could help his father, who is having mobility issues, into the house. So, started the work without the permit, came to the city, and, based on the fact that it was practically in, you can see it's practically touching the sidewalk, um, said, look, we're gonna need a variation, we'll work with you on the permit, we wanna help the situation, we don't wanna be difficult, uh, but at the same time, we also wanna make sure that you're, went through the proper channels with the permit, and, um, also to have council approve this variation. So, that's, that's why we're here.
I, okay, I understand all that, but it just seemed like we're already past that. So, why aren't we just asking council to accept what needs to be accepted, so that the father have access to the house and move forward?
I mean, that's what we're, what we're asking here, is saying that this happened, this was constructed, they should have gotten a permit. They should have, in theory, done this before, you know, their father, the patriarch of the family fell ill, or lost mobility, I should say. However, that didn't happen, they built it without a permit, so they came to my department, we reviewed the permit, and said, by the way, you also are gonna need a variation because of how close you've built to the, uh, front yard setback. So, totally agree, this was built, the son had this built in haste prior to getting a permit.
Right.
Attorney Zito?
I was just gonna, Wayne summed it up, basically, they, they put the cart before the horse, but, in this case, you still make them apply for the variance, so that it'd be, it's illegal, uh, it's legal that they are that close to the, to the sidewalk, then, so...
Are they willing to do that?
Yes, that's why they, that's why this is before you now, because they, we're told, hey, you got the cart before the horse, apply for the variance, we'll run it through the council, and that's what's before you guys now.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, then we'll move on to the next item, which is item number thirteen, the first reading of ordinance twenty-two-five-oh-eight. Could you please read this?
Ordinance amending chapters six-oh-eight and eight-oh-six of the liquor code.
Um, Alderman Parker, would you mind flipping the lights back on? Thanks. Manager Boyer?
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, periodically, the liquor commission, legal counsel, and the city clerk, uh, review chapters six-oh-eight and eight-oh-six of the liquor codes, uh, to ensure the verbiage is current, reflects current practices and trends. Uh, modifications to, uh, chapters six-oh-eight and eight-oh-six of the liquor code have been identified as portions for the code that are out of date, such as requiring landline phone numbers, or the need for further clarifications. Um, for example, the, uh, requirement for a certificate of insurance has been listed in the codes for some time. In the language, all such certificates shall list the city of Freeport as a certificate holder, has been added to clarify that the city does not need to be named as an additional insured. Other outdated sections of the code have been adjusted or removed, uh, to match observed needs of the license holder and actual circumstances throughout the city, and staff, um, requests you to move this forward to second reading.
Is there such a motion?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion made by Alderman Sellers, seconded by Alderman Clem, discussion on this ordinance? Move on to item number fourteen, which is the first reading of ordinance twenty-two-five-oh-nine. Could you please read this?
Ordinance approving airport hangar M-two lease with Kelsey Excavating.
Thank you. Manager Boyer?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. By the way, staff is requesting suspension of the rules on this one. Kelsey Excavating is interested in leasing hangar M-four at Alberta's Airport. Uh, the agreement generates a hundred and sixty-five dollars per month in revenue to the city, and staff recommends approval of the lease.
Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion made by Alderman Sellers, seconded by Alderman Parker, any discussion on the ordinance? Alderman Shadle?
I just wanna point out that, I believe, the memo said it was hangar M-four.
I'm sorry, correction, M-two, yep.
Thank you.
Make a motion for suspension?
Second.
We have a motion to suspend the rules made by Alderman Clem, seconded by Alderman Sellers, again, must pass by two-thirds majority. Madam Clerk, would you please take the role on the suspension only?
Clem?
Aye.
Monroe?
Aye.
Simmons?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Shadle?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
And Sellers?
Aye.
The suspension of the rules passes eight to zero.
Okay, then, now before you, council, is the final passage for ordinance twenty-two-five-oh-nine. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the role.
Clem?
Aye.
Monroe?
Aye.
Simmons?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Shadle?
Aye.
Sanders?
Aye.
And Sellers?
Aye.
And the hangar lease under the new format is approved, eight to zero.
Move on to item number fifteen, which is the adoption of resolution twenty-two-five-oh-one. Could you please read this?
Resolution approving memorandum of agreement between the city and AFSMI to create the position of instrument and control technician slash electrician one.
Manager Boyer?
Thank you, Your Honor. As previously discussed, the community, the whole, uh, staff's identified the need for a stair step, uh, grade fifteen, to allow individuals from within the city utility to be able to apply for a, uh, future position within the maintenance department, ultimately ending it at grade seventeen. Uh, so, staff requests, um, approval from, um, city council to move forward in creating the interim grade fifteen step, so that we can, uh, allow qualified applicants to begin the, uh, process to move to a grade seventeen.
So move.
Is there a motion to adopt? Alderman Sellers?
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Sellers, seconded by Alderman Parker, for the adoption of resolution twenty-two-five-oh-one. Discussion? Alderman Sanders?
Yeah, um, Manager Boyer, did, we did talk about this from, about the, um, the grade, the pay grade. We talked about that, and then I, I, I wanted to ask you, uh, have this, is this, this is a new position, am I correct?
Yes, this would be the creation of a new position.
Okay, is, is that, is that, uh, the going classification rate for that position? Is that, is, is that across, is that, since it's new, who created the pay grade? Who did that?
Uh, so, in consultation with the utility superintendent, we were looking for a solution, uh, in line with some of our other pay grades, similar to, uh, street trainee, uh, is hired on at the city, and there's a interim, so that first step, they, they hire in at, um, a lower grade, I believe it's a thirteen, and then they move into a grade fourteen, when they become a street maintenance worker. This is a similar thing, just for a bit, um, higher classification of, in technical ability requirement.
Fifteen.
So, the, so the fifteen would be, if we have some employees in the city that have a pretty good mechanical background, have rudimentary understanding of hydraulic and pneumatic systems, uh, but maybe don't possess the understanding of how to do programming on, um, starters, motors, and drivers and controllers, or don't have any back... and drivers and controllers, or don't have any background on rebuilding some of the motors or pumps. This gives us that transitionary step to go from wherever they are in the organization to the ultimate goal, which would be instrumental controls technician grade 17.
I'm waiting.
What are you waiting for?
Waiting for you to tell me I spoke too many times, that's what I'm waiting for.
You spoke once, did you want to speak again?
Yeah.
Okay, then how about you do that?
Okay, nobody opposing it, okay. Why not the highest pay grade if it's recommended that, that you want to move him to a 15? Is it because he hasn't met the, he hasn't met the skill levels yet, or the knowledge, or the training? Is the reason why he's at that, you propose a 15 as opposed of a 17?
Yes.
And, and what would the, what would be the requirement? He meets all of the, all of the training skills and things of this nature before you can move him a step higher?
Essentially, what I'm saying here is you need a year or two of mentorship with the, with the maintenance department to gain the finer skills necessary.
That would be your recommendation, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, all right, I'm good.
Alderman Stacy.
My biggest ordeal with this whole deal is that they're weeks from going into negotiation. And I don't know why this could not have been settled in negotiations, first of all. Second of all, we have had people placed in positions that were not equipped for that position, yet they were still placed there, they were given extra training and whatever they needed through Highland or wherever to get what they needed to qualify. And so how do we determine who we do that for and who we don't do that for? I, I just feel that this position should have stayed at the level 17 as it was, and the person that was bidding on the position should have been given the education or the training or whatever it needed at that level. Because even the person before the level was empty, was not qualified for the position. Yet they remained at the level 17. And we have got to treat people equally. What's good for the goose is good for the gander. These people have to work in one another's faces daily. They don't need to be enemies working side by side, they got to work together. And we as a council need to make sure that things are happening fair and just. That's all.
There's no further discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Clem.
Aye.
Monroe.
No.
Simmons. Parker.
Aye.
Stacy.
No.
Shadle.
Aye.
Sanders.
No.
And Sellers.
Aye.
The resolution passes one, two, three, four, five to three.
Item number 16 is the adoption of resolution 202504. Could you please read this?
Resolution approving memorandum of understanding with the fraternal order of police regarding post-employment health plan or PEP.
Chief Schimberger?
Yes, so this matter was before the council two weeks ago, and then I think it got pushed to the cow. So we've talked about this, I'm not going to read the entire memo, but basically what it says is during the negotiations with the FOP during this last contract, three officers were either at 20 years for years of entire, or retirement, or will be at 20 years during the duration of this contract, and they were offered an ability to be grandfathered into the prior PEP provisions where if they did retire with at least 20 years of service, they then would get compensation for their sick time that they accumulated. So this is just, I guess, solidifying that agreement, and it's something that we talked about for the last two weeks now.
Thank you. At the last council meeting, we did have a motion to adopt this resolution made by Alderman Clem, seconded by Alderman Parker, so we don't need to do that again. So is there any further discussion? Seeing none, madam clerk, please take the roll.
Clem.
Aye.
Monroe.
Aye.
Simmons. Parker.
Aye.
Stacy.
Aye.
Shadle.
Aye.
Sanders.
Aye.
And Sellers.
Aye.
The resolution is adopted, eight to zero.
Item number 17 is the adoption of resolution 202505. Could you please read this?
Resolution ratifying emergency board up of 1300 East South Street by NiCam Construction.
Thank you, Director Duckman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The former hotel on US 20, most recently branded as a Travelodge Inn, formerly the Holiday Inn, it has been condemned since January 11th of 2017, declared a chronic nuisance on November 16th of 2023, and in 2024, it currently has a lien of $34,100 on it. The city is currently petitioned to Circuit Court for demolition order, which is ongoing. On December 3rd of 2024, Fire Chief Scott Miller informed me via email that there was an apparent break-in at the property, which was immediately investigated by our police department. Chief Miller shared his immediate concern of the building being a fire hazard with people potentially starting fires to stay warm in the upcoming winter months. Due to immediate health and safety concern, I solicited bids from three contractors in accord, in accordance with our codified ordinances to board up all entrances into the building with half-inch OSB. Three bids were provided below, two in the memorandum, and they came in as NiCam Construction bid $13,863, Winter Construction bid $15,000, and CMM and Associates bid $23,076. City moved forward with NiCam Construction as the lowest responsible bidder to form the emergency board up, and the work was subsequently completed on December 16th of this year, or 2024, rather. Staff recommends approval of the resolution to remit payment to NiCam Construction for the emergency board up services at 1300 South Street.
Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion made by Alderman Sellers, seconded by Alderman Shadle. Alderman Sanders, did you have something?
Yes. Director Duckman. It was recommended to condemn and demolish this property, is that what we're saying?
We are working on that, and we do have an ongoing case on that to demolish this property.
What prompted, what was the neglect that prompted this move?
Well, it's long been neglected. It was condemned in 2017, and it was declared a chronic nuisance by my, by the hard work of my department of November of 2023. And in that time, we've, it's accumulated over $34,000 in code violations on the property. And since early 2024, the city's been moving forward for its demolition.
Okay. I, I, I know Chief Schimberger already made a comment, but I was just wondering, are we patrolling that area to prevent any other kind of provocations or whatever that might cause problems like incidents, fires, or, or anything that the city would be liable to from this abandonment of this property? Because we got to post it first, though, right? Or have we done that already?
We are, we are currently in that process right now. I do want to commend Chief Schimberger and Chief Miller for constantly keeping me abreast of what's going on on that property. They do a great job monitoring it. And prior to this time, my team, my inspectors have been boarding up the property, doing the best that they can, but they find another window to break in, and this last incident had several areas of entry and several broken windows, and it was to a point where with the winter months coming, really needed to secure the structure.
Definitely. Okay, thank you.
Alderman Stacy.
Okay, you spoke about boarding it up. What are we looking at to board this up again? I didn't write down my totals.
Okay, so it's already boarded up right now, it's been boarded up. But there, the, the total cost to board it up was $13,863.
Okay, now this is what I don't understand. Okay, I understand you reeking havoc from the owner? The landlord, the owner?
All right, I'm sorry, what was the?
Are you wreaking havoc from?
I'm wreaking havoc from that person?
Yes.
Meaning I'm, I'm trying to understand how I wreak havoc.
Is he giving you a hard time? You don't, he don't want it tore down, or?
But, well, I, I will say that yes, the city is moving to tear it down through the courts.
So we can't fast demo it? I mean, is it getting $100 fines?
It is getting $100 fines a day, and, and it will not be fast-tracked because it's a commercial property and not a abandoned residential property. And I certainly brought that up to our legal team and said, can we fast-track this property? And they said, with it being a commercial property, we're going to move forward with a petition at the Circuit Court. So it's an ongoing, it's an ongoing legal matter right now, and I just would say personally, I strongly believe it needs to be remediated yesterday.
Yeah, I hate that we spent $13,000 to board it up when it needs to come down.
I'm with you 100%. I, I am with you 100%. You know, we're, we're doing our best to get this done quicker.
There's no further discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Clem.
Aye.
Monroe.
Aye.
Simmons. Parker.
Aye.
Stacy.
Aye.
Shadle. Sanders.
Aye.
And Sellers.
Aye.
The resolution is adopted, eight to zero.
Item number 18 is adoption of resolution 202506. Could you please read this?
Resolution approving LexiPol invoice for use of subscription material.
Chief Schimberger.
The Freeport Police Department has used LexiPol Knowledge Management System for the development and issuance of policy and procedures since 2019. Strong policy and procedure is critical for law enforcement agencies to ensure staff responds to calls for service in a consistent manner. Some of the benefits of utilizing LexiPol KMS to develop and maintain policies and procedures include ensuring the agency's policies are current and comply with changes in laws. LexiPol KMS adapts policies to include legislative language when state legislator, legislator enacts new legislation. Responding to civil and criminal cases, LexiPol KMS monitors court cases and ensures the policy and procedures are compliant with changes in case law. And LexiPol KMS includes language necessary to facilitate the accreditation process. The annual subscription for LexiPol KMS is $15,180.52. This cost is included in the fiscal year 2025 PD budget, underlying item 101-151-6150.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So move. Second.
We have a motion made by Alderman Clem, seconded by Alderman Shadle. Discussion on the resolution. Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Clem.
Aye.
Monroe.
Aye.
Simmons. Parker.
Aye.
Stacy.
Aye.
Shadle.
Aye.
Sanders.
Aye.
And Sellers.
Aye.
And that resolution is adopted, eight to zero.
Item number 19 is the adoption of resolution 202507. Please read this.
Resolution approving purchase of in-code module for accounts payable automation.
Director Richter.
Thank you, Your Honor. This, currently, the city of Freeport uses Tyler Incode for payroll, general ledger accounting, utility billing, and accounts payable since it was implemented in 2020. The current process, and this is just very basic from beginning to end, the current process for entering invoices for payment is inefficient and impacts many departments. Currently, the fire department, police, library, public works, and the finance department enter their own invoices into the system. The process for entering invoices is a hard copy of the invoices received by mail, or we print it out from an email. The invoice is reviewed and matched with packing lists as applicable. Once reviewed by the department head, the invoice is coded and signed, signed as approval, and the invoice, along with any backup, is scanned into the system. The invoice is hand keyed into Tyler Incode for payment, and the scanned document is then attached. Each of the departments I listed before, they submit their packets of invoices electronically to finance for review. The city accountant reviews all packets by checking the keyed data and comparing it to the original invoice. And that pile of bills, so for example, the packet that you approved in the consent agenda is this big. And so electronically, well, I'm sorry, at this point, the paper bills go from the city accountant, they go to my desk, I review all of them, then they go to the city manager's desk, he reviews them, and then they end up in the consent agenda for council. Tyler Incode has developed an advanced module called accounts payable automation. Once a scanned document is uploaded into the software, the information from the invoice, such as the date, the amount, the vendor, is electronically imported into the software. The information, the imported information does need to be verified, so you still need a human, and the account code needs to be entered. Once the invoice is entered, the invoice is put into an electronic workflow. For example, instead of manually signing and coding a piece of paper, the invoice is electronically forwarded to the department head for approval, and then into a flow to go to the city accountant for review, finance director, city manager. By adding this technology, we anticipate the reduction of staff time necessary to enter and approve invoices. This will not only positively impact the finance department, but also all departments that enter their own invoices. The strategic plan alignment here is responsive, efficient government. The finance department staff requests approval to purchase the accounts payable automation module that is just a piece, a new piece of Tyler Incode at the quoted price of $11,838 annually with a $2.50 implementation cost.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion made by Alderman Sellers, seconded by Alderman Parker. Discussion on the resolution. Madam Clerk, Alderman, Alderman Stacy.
Yes. I, I'm concerned that it took us four years to realize this isn't giving us what we need or really want, and we're willing to buy a second piece of the same in-code, Tyler Incode company. Is that the route we need to go, or do we need to look at something totally different?
Manager Boyer, did you want that?
Yes, Alderman Stacy, I think you're referring to when we went from, we changed accounting systems, and I think you get an opportunity when you first purchase a new piece of software to elect to find out what of the modules you actually want to use, because there's a lot more modules there that you may not use. So you go ahead and elect the ones that you want, you implement them, you see how the system works, and then over a period of time in review, you have a look, like Michelle has done, and say, hey, we might need to add this accounts payable module. So I think this is a kind of a, a little bit of a tuning of the system right now. It's the addition of something we need that has come essentially to our attention, that it really could be streamlined if we were able to do that. So I would just submit to you that this is actually more of an evolutionary process, a refinement process, and I think it's a, I support it fully, so thank you.
There's no further discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Clem.
Aye.
Monroe.
Aye.
Simmons. Parker.
Aye.
Stacy.
Aye.
Shadle. Sanders is absent, Sellers.
Aye.
The resolution is adopted, seven to zero.
Item number 20 is the adoption of resolution 202508. Could you please read this?
Resolution approving Fairgram master service contract for 2025.
Thank you, Manager Boyer.
Thank you, Your Honor. So the city has various annual engineering needs, projects that come up and things as we go along with the, the large. projects that come up and things as we go along with the large construction schedule that we have put before ourselves the last several years. So some of the things that come up throughout the year are topographical studies, infrastructure system mapping, geo-information systems, construction survey and staking, elevation records, ADA issues, multiple grants and loan assistance, water, storm, and sanitary sewer utility system design, structural assessments, street infrastructure, airport engineering support, various right-of-way permitting, Illinois EPA Protection Agency requirements, Illinois Department of Transportation necessities and quality assurance and quality control via inspections and observations related to construction. In addition, soil borings and analysis, and all emergency needs for professional engineering requirements. Or, so this, this consultant work is performed outside of specific project contracts brought to the council and requires specific funding sources. Freeport requires an engineering firm to provide support with staff, technical professional licensed engineers who specialize in these diverse areas of expertise. So the city of Freeport approves various engineering contracts throughout the year and the support for all the city staff departments as needed. So this would be a contract that's related back to the time and material needed by staff at various times throughout the year during the construction phases. This contract allows general engineering requirements not related to a specific contract to be performed on a day-to-day need basis. So it also enables the city to be reactive to our daily needs and requirements as the infrastructure emergencies arise. We've been doing this for several years, and all the major projects are handled separately. And I've, you know, if we do not use this entire agreement, we do not use it all, we just use what we need. So it's been very helpful, and it allows us to contend with issues that emerge in the field efficiently and effectively. So with that, I would request council approve this resolution.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion made by Alderman Sellers, seconded by Alderman Clem. Discussion on the resolution. Alderman Sanders.
Yeah, what are we, what are we trying to say here? That Fairgram made a proposal, is Fairgram making a proposal to the city?
Well, each year, the, the city actually requests that Fairgram put together this master services agreement. And as I mentioned just a little while ago, this gives us the flexibility to get certain projects done and completed throughout the year because whatever you're dealing with, construction, whenever you're dealing with things day in and day out like we do, whether it be lining, whether it's sewer cleaning or replacements of sewer mains, this gives us the operational flexibility to, to get those things done. And we have kind of a cap amount, and I don't believe we've exceeded that since we started.
Alderman Sanders?
Should I wait?
Alderman Sanders, go ahead.
Using Fairgram, Fairgram services
Yes.
to do the inspection, the whole entire ball of wax or whatever, whenever inspections or job needs to be, projects needs to be considered and things like that, we are dependent upon Fairgram to make that assessment and determination and the cost and the estimated cost that we have not had a chance to to determine whether or not their cost is justifiable to work on the city for the city at, at, at large. In other, in other words, what Fairgram has not revealed to us, all of its cost services, all of its structural cost service and infrastructure cost services, and, and are these estimated costs? Because I like to have a cost that is already something that the council has determined whether or not we will go forward with certain services and certain cost.
Director Boyer?
If I could speak to that point, number one, it's been my experience, and I've dealt with a number of different engineering design firms and different engineers. Fairgram not only is local, they know and understand our systems, whether it's transportation, water, sewer, storm, and a whole lot of other systems. They have always delivered at or below cost. And when they have had a problem where they've had a cost overrun, we didn't see a change order. They just took care of it. They took care of it internally because Freeport is an important customer to this, to their organization. However, I want to address your point, which is as far as the time and material portion of this contract is concerned, okay, these, this is definitely reviewed and overseen by staff. We make sure that anything they're doing, we're keeping track of those times. And we're also keeping track of all of the activities that they're doing and that we go through and parse those out and approve them individually when the invoices come through. But I wanted to make one last point, which was in, in the relationship that we have with Fairgram, the only difference you would do in other ways, like for instance, if you had another project and you were interested in pursuing other help or other engineering services contracts, you wouldn't, this wouldn't be a bidding situation. It would be a statement of qualification where you would submit to various engineering companies, there are statement of qualifications, and you would receive those. I've looked at a number of those, different process, different statements on different projects. And I will suggest because of their, not only their track record of success and their knowledge, deep knowledge of the city, they are very, very qualified and to the point where it'd be difficult to find anyone more qualified.
Alderman Stacy?
Yes. I don't know that we did, but I don't know that we didn't go over last year because Fairgram came back and asked for two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars extra. Now, I know what was budgeted, what was started with, and I know there's also a twenty percent increase that can be added up in there as well, if I'm not mistaken. My only concern, my only request. We have twenty, thirty items on this agenda. And three are contracts with Fairgram. It would have been nice to have gotten these in November or December at the latest to go through all this instead of spending the weekend trying to understand. And I know it happens. But how many people are really even reading them to even understand what it's saying and what we're committed to? Or are we just getting back and saying, yes, aye, aye, aye? We don't take the police, we don't take Ashmead when their contract is up and take a couple days to approve their contract? And we just need to see this information before it runs out in advance. I'm not against it happening. We're indebted to Fairgram. I'm not against Fairgram. But it would be nice to get these type of things in advance.
Well, if you, if you think that, you know, it's going to be two, three months in advance and everything, we'll never get anything done. I mean, this is normal procedure to put something forward.
What is normal?
It's not normal.
It is. Adoptions of resolutions are...
Mayor Jody Miller, all I'm asking is that, not that nothing be changed, but that we receive it in advance to go through it in case we have any questions. Because I don't want to make a motion to move this to the cow in February. That would be my right. So please understand where I'm coming from. I know what's been normed, but what's been normed don't mean it's been right. All I am is trying to take time, three contracts, am I correct, on this agenda? I don't want to just, duh, 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 duh. Okay. All I'm asking is that if we're going to vote on something in January pertaining to Fairgram's three contracts, is that we get them in November to look over them, to ask questions, to do whatever we may want to do. Maybe some don't want to do nothing because they ain't done nothing for so long. But some of us want to understand.
Darren, did you want to add to that?
Yeah, sure. We can certainly try to get contracts here sooner. I would like to state that this is the exact same contract, the exact same everything for the last three years. That is why it wasn't presented sooner. It's an annual contract. And it is a time and material estimation contract, if you read it. So we could continue on the current contracts that we have because there's not a final set amount on it. But city manager direction was to bring new contracts yearly so they can be brought to council and gone, you know, in front of everybody so everybody was still in agreeance of moving that forward. To your statement of the cost, I believe we budgeted the same amount as last year, but city manager directed me to bring only part of the contract first to see what we actually need for the year because it will vary year to year. Last year was a very busy year. So, you know, if we exceed the three-fifty, we would have to bring in additional services back. That would come back to council like it did last year.
I understand all of that. I get all of that.
Alderman Monroe, did you have something?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Normally, I've supported this in the past, but recent events have changed my mind. And there's a lot of reasons why. On January eighth, Fairgram made a post on Facebook. That post says, "We are proud to collaborate with clients like Rob Boyer, city manager of the city of Freeport, City Hall. Rob shares how Fairgram's dedication, communication, exceptional service sets us apart from other firms. Join us in making a difference and enhancing our communities we cherish. Together, we create real change." What most people don't realize, a lot of people in the city of Freeport, is that happens to be right around the same time a local citizen was trying to change the form of government in the city of Freeport. So is there other things going on in the situation? So we've got the, this, this is how convoluted this has become. We've got the public works director signing off on a contract with Fairgram to the city of Freeport that is then countersigned and sent back to the city manager. These agreements come back and forth, the communications. So the director sits in multiple positions. He works for Fairgram. He participates in a lot of this work that's done. And no doubt, Mr. Stieckel does a great job in a lot of things. But it creates a conflict of interest. And that conflict of interest gives the impression of a pay-for-play or something that's nefarious going on. Doesn't have to actually be going on to break and violate the law, a class-four felony, class-four felony. And we walk in this room, hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars, and it's like, well, this is what we've always done. Well, we should be questioning everything we do because we're spending money that we don't always have. And we're constantly raising rates on everything. And we have to come back. And, and this is, this is the Illinois law. "A conflict of interest occurs when a person's personal interests could compromise their judgment, decisions, or actions. This includes financial interests, family relationships, friendships, or social factors." This is the state of Illinois. This is not my opinion. This goes above that as well. And these things have been going on behind closed doors, and they've been occurring over and over and over again. I bring this up because here we go, we're just going to say, three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand for this, a hundred thousand here, a hundred and fifty here, you know, another hundred over here, doesn't matter. Fairgram loves us, of course. I would love the city of Freeport if they gave me half a million or three-quarters of a million dollars a year, every year, minimum. But it causes the appearance, even if it's not happening, it causes the appearance that something nefarious is going on, and we're blocking out other engineering firms that theoretically could be bringing opportunities to the city of Freeport as well and not putting all of our eggs in one basket. And having been in a business and run a business, I understand the dangers of doing that. It puts you in a situation where you're no longer able to check, could somebody else do the same thing at a cheaper cost, at a better solution? You don't know. We're, we've completely pushed all of the other players out. And now we've built this deep relationship where we've got a Fairgram employee who's also a city employee, kind of, I don't really know. I asked the question, nobody's really given me a great answer on that yet. I happen to like him a lot. I think he does a lot of great things for the city. But it doesn't change the fact that this looks not good. My personal opinions don't matter on that. My duty is to the citizens of the Second Ward and the rest of the citizens of Freeport. And when I see things like this coming through that, well, we don't know how much it's going to be, it could be more, it could be less, it just depends on what we do, how busy we are, what we've got going on. And last year was a busy year. I mean, we did a lot. We did Adams, we did a lot of streets, we did a lot of work. But at the same time, now we're starting to, now we're starting to understand why I'm asking the question. We've already paid for the city employees on the other page who are going out and checking and following up to make sure the water mains are connected the right way. But now we understand why we're asking for an increase there as well because now we need more money to pay Fairgram more money. It's not about our city employees, it's about our contractors. And the people of Freeport deserve better than this, and Cecilia's right. Alderman Stacy is one hundred percent right. This should have come to the cow. There's no reason it couldn't have come to the cow, and we talked about it last week. Instead, you're going to shove it through all three at once, and you know what? We know what's going to happen, it's going to pass. But it's not going to pass because I say yes. But people should start questioning, people should start looking at what's going on in this building and asking questions. Not enough people are involved, and they should be. But these three contracts, three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar master service contract for 2025 is, is insanity. You should have to come back to us or put it in the overall budget, lay it out. Here's what we're going to do, here's the projects, here's what we think it's going to be. But once again, we don't do that. We don't lay it out.
And again, that's three years of the same contract and a lot of unsupported accusations. Darren, did you want to defend that?
Yes, I would. So I am going to take those comments personal, because there is no situation going on here. I work very hard for the city of Freeport every day. I don't know another consultant that has brought in thirteen million dollars of funding just this year, which maybe we have a great relationship going on and the interactions between government and a consultant is actually producing more than other, other areas. I'm very proud of the work that I've done. And I will state again, there is nothing going on between city government and Fairgram. We have been embedded in this community for fifty-one years. We have done the city engineering here. There is no employees from any other engineering firm that live in the city of the Freeport. We employ forty people down at our office that are all people that spend money in Freeport. We have a long-term lease at our building in Freeport, so we are embedded here. I can give you examples of other projects that have happened here over the years. And one of them, you guys just approved money for a contract that, a, a, an engineer that didn't even finish their work and decided to pay them, but accusations are coming after us. I will tell you, Mr. Monroe, our firm lost twenty-one thousand dollars on the land... I will tell you, Mr. Monroe, our firm lost $21,000 on the landfill contract last year and we never came back and asked for a penny. We wrote it off, we ate it because that was the agreement. The general engineering contract, which this is the master service, is what it is, that is in replacement of the city engineering department that doesn't exist here. These are things that we have to be nimble on it when buildings fall down, when IDOT permits are needed to do water main construction. There is a lot of work in the City of Freeport that requires this everyday engineering with engineering stamps and with a team of people that are nimble and can react for the City of Freeport. Again, I have 40 people in a building down there that we are paying family wages to. There is not, there is another firm in town. They have nobody that lives in the City of Freeport. So, compare apples to apples. We invest in the community, we also donate to the community, and we have been a great partner to the City of Freeport. I just added this up and we have personally, our firm has brought in over $50 million worth of funding that did not need to be repaid to the City of Freeport in the last, I believe it's 10 or 12 years. So, we have been a good partner and I am taking it personal that you are putting out on the council floor that there's accusations that are not there. And you know me better than that.
Alderman Clem?
Yeah. I'd just like to bring up that I've had the pleasure of working with a number of people in my 20 years as an Alderman. Many of them have been from many other engineering firms. Some of those firms have been successful. Some of those firms have caused us problems. I've worked with probably three or four city engineers over that period of time at least that caused us great problems and great costs to the City of Freeport, who were employed by the City of Freeport, where everybody thought they were saving money. Over the last year, as Director Brian gave his speech about the City of Freeport, we did seven miles of road last year. That's never been done in the City of Freeport. And it took cooperation between Fairgram, their partners, and remember, they oversee all these projects too that happen. It took them, there's never been a year where that much has been produced without any hassle, without any overcharges. I mean, you mentioned they came back once for monies for things. They have managed the landfills for years. I go to Fitness Lifestyles every morning at 5:00 or 5:15, 5:15, 5:30 in the morning. Who do I see in honk at going into work? Darren. Who do I call at 6:00 at night when I've got a question on a project? Darren. Fairgram has been a greatest partner to the City of Freeport as any firm we've ever worked for. And I would never say, I can't think of one project that we went back on that Fairgram had to redo, reproduce, do it over again, or change things on. I believe if you read this, they're asking for X number of dollars and they're asking for, there's a limit set on the amount of money that they can make on this project. There is nothing more favorable in the world, and I know this as being a contractor, than a time and material contract, a time and material contract that you can work with a company that you can trust to get a job done. And I call the question.
I, um...
Well, I have to ask for procedure here, what we're doing.
Oh, if, that's, that's cool. That's cool.
Are you, Alderman Clem, are you making a motion to call the question?
Yes.
So, a motion's been made. It would need a second and then a vote. If that passes by two-thirds majority, then the question is called.
What was the motion?
He made a... Call the question.
Call the question.
I'll second that.
And so, we have a motion made by Alderman Clem.
Who wants to do that?
Alderman Clem made the motion and it has been seconded by Alderman Shadle.
After you got done making that long comment you just made.
You don't have the floor, Alderman Sanders and Carter.
Yeah, but, but he wants to close, he wants to close the discussion.
Yes, he does. That's what's on the floor.
Well, that's, that's his prerogative, but, okay.
So, we have a motion on the floor for that. So, it's not debatable. It's, it has to pass by two-thirds majority. And so, Madam Clerk, could you please call the role on calling the question? Do you understand what this is?
Yeah, I understand.
Okay. So...
Were you asking me?
No, I'm...
Okay, sorry.
So, if you could please call the role on, on calling the question.
Clem?
Aye.
Monroe?
No.
Simmons?
No.
Parker?
Yes.
Stacy?
No.
Shadle?
Aye.
Sanders?
No.
Sellers?
Aye.
One, two, three, we only, we only have four in favor, so that fails.
So, then, more discussion. You've already had twice a talk. Alderman Stacy's once, Alderman Clem's once, Alderman Monroe's once. Is there...
Are we on the same subject or different?
Yeah, we're on the same subject. So, Alderman Parker, Alderman Simmons, Alderman Shadle, Alderman Sellers, do you have anything you want to add?
No.
To...
To this resolution, adopting this resolution?
I, I do.
Okay.
The first thing is, why wouldn't I want someone that I could trust or I'm a good partner with? I mean, that's life. You want a good partner in marriage, you want a good partner in business, you want a good partner in friendship. You know, why wouldn't I want to be working with somebody that I have a good relationship with? That's what I can't understand. It's the same, same thing that we've done the year before, the year before. We've got the ball rolling, we're moving, we're making some strides, where people are complimenting us on our work. But we come and we complain on every, on every number, on every part of the agenda. We have, it's just combative on everyone and it's, it's tiresome.
Alderman Shadle or Alderman Simmons, did either one of you have anything you want to add? You've already had your twice, Larry.
I will.
Alderman Simmons?
Yeah, I just want to say, asking questions, that's, we gotta stop considering that combative. Like, we shouldn't be expected to just come say yes to everything. Some things you may have the answer for and you want to ask those questions and you want to ask those questions on public record, but it's always assumed that people aren't prepared or they're combative and aggressive when they have questions. And I just don't think that's fair. Like, I don't have any more questions or discussion, but if somebody else does, then I'm gonna vote no to call in the question so they can finish their, their discussion. That's only fair.
Alderman Stacy, did you have your hand up?
No, but I will say that I too said no because I feel that if someone has something to say, they should have the option to say it. I mean, we've been limited to two questions. So, I'm not gonna take that from someone if they have further discussion. I said what I said. I meant what I said. We have three contracts on this agenda. It would have been nice just to have gotten them in advance. I'm not saying anything negative about anybody.
All the time.
All I just said. No, not all the time.
Most of the time.
No, no, not all the time. I'm just saying, I wanted the contracts in advance. I understand we'd have had the same contract for the last three years. Last year, I believe, was my first time voting on the contract. And I didn't know what I was voting on. I couldn't understand half of the stuff that was in them. Do that make me stupid? No. That make me ask questions.
And maybe it should prepare you.
And that's my right. And so, just like when I go into contract negotiations, it's a three, four, five month ordeal. I'm not asking for that. I'm just saying, so that when the year is up, like where we're at today, that I've already, didn't just have Friday till today to prepare. I know I could call you. I call you often. Gonna keep calling you. Called you yesterday. And I'm all right with that. But I'm not gonna be called combative because I open my mouth and I speak.
Amen.
Well, we have a resolution to adopt for Fairgram's master service engineering agreement. You've already spoken twice.
I did?
Yes. So, if there's no further discussion, Madam Clerk, please take the role.
Clem?
Aye.
Monroe?
No.
Simmons?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Shadle?
Aye.
Sanders?
No.
And Sellers?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted six to two.
Item number 21 is the adoption of Resolution 2025-09. Could you please read this?
Resolution approving Fairgram master service contract for public works service for 2025.
Thank you, Manager Boyer.
Thank you, Your Honor. The city also requires a professional public works assistant for various civil, environmental, engineering, and managerial duties daily to oversee the city department effectively and efficiently. It's essential to have a director who's immersed in the city infrastructure and has the history and knowledge to handle the various demands of the position. City requests assistance to handle the volume of daily duties required by this large department, including but not limited to right-of-way permitting, overweight permitting, IDOT bridges, streets, forestry water, wastewater sewer, and storm infrastructure. City staff requires professional assistance as needed from Fairgram to assist in the management of the department and specifically duties related to the various civil, environmental engineering and project management services that require an expert level of knowledge and experience. The public works master service agreement provides a team of local engineer experts for the city resources as needed. The total cost of these services is $100,000 on a time and material basis and is billed as needed as the city manager or department directors require. So, this contract represents cost savings to the city, a public works director hired position with full salary and benefits, compensation would be essentially $130,000 or more. So, recommendation, staff recommend city council approve the public works professional related assistance.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So, move. Second.
There've been a motion made by Alderman Clem, seconded by Alderman Shadle. Discussion on this resolution? Alderman Sanders?
Yeah, we throwing that, that term, directors, without the consultation from the council into knowing who is stepping up to the plate to play these roles. Obviously, we are being bypassed for these individuals who are, are directors as per se. And, and we don't understand the whole criteria of these directors and what are they here for and who's doing the hiring or putting people in place without the consultation of the council. And if we're doing that, no, I gotta keep talking because she gonna shut me down and put, and put me with, on the pause, on the pause list. And so, I don't want that right now. I don't want you to interject at this point in time because she's subject to negate what I'm trying to, trying to talk about. But here's, but my prob, my problem is, we're putting people in place to make decision-making decisions without the council. I have a problem with that. I have a problem with every prominent positions like directors. I need to know who these directors are because these directors are making decisions on how taxpayers' dollars are being spent, how we're billing things, how we're doing anything when it comes to contract. This is what's happening constantly. And I, I don't want the residents in this city to be in the dark. I want to make sure that everything is brought to the light, how we got here, because people are sitting at home is, well, where did he come from? How did he get here? Who hired him? Who authorized the position? Well, if council is not mediating none of this, talking about it, then we, we're clueless. They're just popping up like popcorns, you know? And we gotta get a handle on that. And, and when I look at my manager, I know that, I know that he's the link to these kinds of things and we have to ask more questions. That's the reason why questions needs to be asked in terms of how we go about the day-to-day operation and business of the city. And so, we need to know these things and, and we shouldn't have to be debating it. That's what we, that's where, we're combating it, slinging mud everywhere. You know, I'm just going because the chairperson is running things and I don't want nobody to speak while I'm speaking until I get an opportunity to say what I have to say. I want to make that a practice. I think every council person wants to make that a practice because I sit here and listen to others elaborate on their concerns, comments, and views and everything, their opinions and everything. So, I want the same respect when I, when, when that comes forward. And my question was just one question, well, maybe more than one, but the point of matter is, I'm trying to find out how we are handling things when it comes to bringing people to the floor to make consultations, to tell the council what is going on and what is expected and what they're trying to do. I want my city manager making these kinds of discussions and proposals. I want him to be more involved into understanding when I want to go to your office. If I want to go to your office and, and want to talk about what went on in council, I, I expect something different than what someone, what outside people are talking about. I want my council, I want my manager to know all these things so I can have a legitimate answer. And when I come into the council, the people can understand that I consulted with you. I have someone to say, well, this is the information I got from my, my manager, my, my city manager. And I'm just going to, I'm just gonna voice that to the general public so they can understand why we vote the way we vote and sustain and things of this nature. And so, my, my whole thing is, is that I, I want to say we might need an overhaul on how we do things from the administrative position. So, that's, that's my, that's my whole thing. If you want to cut me off.
Come on.
Oh, no, I'm holding my tongue. So, I, I believe you're asking who gets to make the decision of the master service contract for the public works? That's what this is. So, you can vote yes or no.
Yeah, but it's already in place.
It's, it's for you to make a determination. You either vote yes or vote no.
Yeah.
That's what this is. Okay. So, any further discussion? Darren?
So, I'll answer your question or try to. This works no differently than it would if somebody else sat in this seat. Directors have a certain responsibility to the city. They can only approve so much. Anything else has to go. It's a purchasing policy that is by the city. Michelle ensures that we follow the purchasing policy of anything that's done. It all comes to council. I believe anything, Rob can't prove anything over $9,999 per our ordinance. So, everything's still run through the council. We don't make decisions independently of the council. Rob and I work together on public works every day to ensure that our team has a good mission and we're getting things done, which I think is proven in the city that more and more and more is getting done since I, I've been assisting the city over the last two years. So, I have sat in that director role for the last two years. We're asking to continue it. We're making great strides and our contract, I believe, is advantageous to the city because it's for less than they could hire somebody for with benefits, a truck, equipment. Our cost is all in, 100%. It's time and material as needed. We've, last year, we made it the whole year and we have enough to maybe go a little bit into February yet. So, we've, we've done a good job managing the contract and there's a lot more to this. We do permitting for water and sewer permits for residents. We also do overweight permits. There, we also do civil reviews for the City of Freeport. So, in these contracts, there's money returned to the city through those fees, through Mr. Duckman's department. There's, I, I don't know the exact number. Michelle could probably get it. There's probably over $100,000. There's probably over $100,000 in permit and civil review fees that get returned to the city for the work that we do every day through contractors, trucking companies, things like that, that before I took this role, nobody was really managing. And it wasn't really happening. So I have done my best to clean up the areas that we could and should. And I think the role's been very advantageous to both parties. And I live in Freeport. I love Freeport, and I work hard for Freeport every day. And if you don't believe me, you can ask any of the directors of the other departments that I work with every day, from fire, police, finance, community development, even the library. And let them judge it.
Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Clem?
Aye.
Monroe?
No.
Simmons?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Shadle?
Aye.
Sanders?
No.
And Sellers?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted six to two.
And item number 22 is the adoption of Resolution 2025-10. Could you please read this?
Resolution approving Fairgram agreement to provide Alberta's Airport stormwater inspections and reports.
Manager Boyer?
Thank you, Your Honor. Similarly, we have to, every year, we have to renew our stormwater permits. Alberta's Airport requires its own stormwater permit. So this is essentially an agreement with Fairgram to process a stormwater permit. The total amount budgeted for this amount, for this item, is about $5,000.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So move second.
We have a motion made by Alderman Clem, seconded by Alderman Shadle. Discussion?
Point of correction, $5,500.
Alderman, Stacy?
I thought it was... Okay.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Clem?
Aye.
Monroe?
Stay.
Simmons?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Shadle?
Aye.
Sanders is absent. Sellers?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted 601.
Item number 24 is update of the city's goals for the Social Justice Committee, presented by Manager Boyer.
Thank you, Your Honor. And in the interest of time, I will keep this as concise as I can. At, we, the Social Justice Committee, when it was meeting, offered several recommendations and metrics to assess the city's progress in diversity, equity, and inclusion within city employment primarily. There are some other metrics. But I do wanna compare 2020 as our first year to quarter four of last year. And just highlight a few of the pretty significant increases that have happened here. So in the police department, female employees were increased 26.3% in that period of time. So we started off with 19 working for the police department. We currently have 24. That was an increase of five. In terms of minority employees, we started off with six minorities in the police department in 2020. We have increased that to 16. It's a positive gain of 10. That's a total increase of 166%. And I would provide the total employment. In 2020, we had 63 full-time employees at the police department. Currently, we have 67. That's a total staff increase of four. So while we increased our diversity and our women employees, we, it certainly didn't match the number of employees that we increased positions. On fire, we're working on fire. It's a lengthy process that involves various steps and requirements for qualification. I think we had reached out through various marketing methods this year when we solicited for new recruits. And I believe Chief has received the most recruits coming to the fire department than he's ever had before. But Chief, if you could elaborate on that, I would appreciate it.
Sure, I'd be happy to. I believe this last recruitment effort, we had 37 applications picked up and 36 returned. A number of those applicants either failed to show up for the written exam, written exam and orientation, or they could not produce the correct paperwork at the orientation and written exam. I believe it was 19 showed up for that. And then we, we had, I believe, six wash out from the written exam. And then we also had a number of other applicants wash out from the testing process, the honesty test, the background checks. So eventually, we wound up with a final eligibility list of five. But just an example of our recruitment efforts this year, we recruited, we sent out publications, we advertised, I should say, in more than 42 different areas. So our outreach was greater this recruitment process. The prior one, we advertised about 24 different areas. So we more than doubled what we were trying to do. And recruitment retention is difficult in the fire service, whether it's here, the suburbs, or even in the city. So this last group, we tried extra hard to have a cross-section of our community. And we wound up with a eligibility list of five.
Thank you, Chief. Just to round this out, so all other departments, so not including fire and police, we increased our female employees by 32%, our minority employees by 100% out of a total increase of staff of about 12%. So enterprise-wide, we increased our female employees by 30%, our minority employees by 116%. And that is with a total employment increase of 10%. So I just wanted to thank and reach out to all the department heads and everyone who's been a part of this. It's very important work that we're doing. And I'm glad that we are able to find qualified folks to not only represent as our city employees, but especially as our first responders. So thank you very much for all your efforts on that. And that's all I've got, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. We'll move on to department heads. Finance?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would just like to thank council for the approval of the software. It's much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Community Development?
Nothing tonight, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Public Works?
Nothing except for thank you for the generous contracts.
Fire?
Yes, thank you. Each council member received a copy of the fire department's 2024 annual report that's highlighting the department activities for the last calendar year.
Thank you. Fire? I'm sorry, police?
Yeah, I have no report tonight.
Thank you. Library?
I'm gonna talk for a little bit longer than I normally do. And I know it's been three hours, so thank you for your time. We are starting our One Book, One Freeport Community Read on Saturday. We have our book drop party from 12:00 PM to 2:00 PM. And One Book, One Freeport is our biennial community read program. Community read programs work to promote literacy while engaging an entire community in a common reading experience. Join us on Saturday, January 25th, for our official kickoff event for all ages. Pick up your free book and enjoy live music from the early jazz society, tasty snacks, a community craft activity, and a puzzle for everyone to contribute to. After the book giveaway, the library hosts a variety of programs to explore, including film screenings, group discussions, storytimes, and crafts. Be sure to check out our website for our calendar of events. And I can officially tell you that the book that was chosen this year is Dandelion Wine by Ray Bradbury. Dandelion Wine by Ray Bradbury. So be sure to come to the library to get your copy of the book. And it is free. You get to keep the book. 12 to 2 on Saturday. And then, really exciting announcement. We are officially going fine-free effective on February 1st. So have you heard that starting on February 1st, the Freeport Public Library is fine-free? Returning late due to being out of town, no problem. Keeping a book a few days longer so you can finish? We've been there. Found a book in a pile of kids' toys while you were moving and you're afraid to come back to the library because of how many fees you'll have? We understand life happens. Welcome back. Overdue fines are widely recognized by professional library organizations as a form of social inequity. And there's been multiple studies conducted that show that imposing fines neither teaches responsibility nor motivates borrowers to return their items on time. And any outstanding late fines on Freeport Public Library items will be purged from our patron accounts starting on February 1st of 2025. All of our items will be fine-free with the exception of our hotspots, our STEM kits, our parent kits, and the library of things items. Essentially, those items cost a lot more money than the average book. So we'll still have some overdue fines on those. But borrowing privileges will be suspended for patrons with significantly overdue material. And for lost and damaged items, the cost of the item will still be charged to the patron account if they do not return it. If you have more questions for us, feel free to call us at the library or come in. And we'll be continuing to update our website with more information. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. IT? Airport? City Manager?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll keep this quick. I just wanted to thank Director Bridge for his report tonight. I thought it was very comprehensive. And it reflects a tremendous amount of work and effort and execution that's been done by the city staff. So thank you to the staff. Thank you to our employees. You all have done an excellent job in 2024.
I agree. Alderman Clem?
Mayor?
It is my turn. Alderman Clem?
Just wanted to announce that on January 28th, we will not have our neighborhood watch. Please attend the event being held at the library at 6 o'clock that night. It will be the new candidates that are running for positions. That's far more important than the neighborhood watches at this point. Please participate in that, whatever you do. Please get involved. Please vote. Thank you.
Alderman Monroe?
Nothing tonight.
Alderman Simmons?
No, thank you.
Alderman Park?
Nothing tonight.
Alderman Stacy?
Last Saturday, January 18th, we had our National Day of Racial Healing. What an empowering event it was. Also, we were scheduled yesterday to have our Dr. King celebration. And due to the cold weather, it was canceled. But we will be having it this Saturday, January 25th, opening up 4:30 with praise and worship and program at 5:00. Please come out and show your support.
Alderman Shadle?
I just want to commend Darren Stekel and Fairgram. A lot of things said tonight that were stretches. The amount of value that we get out of that corporation is phenomenal. The amount of integrity that's sitting in that seat is phenomenal. Thank you.
Alderman Sanders?
I have no reports right now.
Alderman Sellers?
None.
Public comments? Tommy?
You said about the hotel mansion? When they're gonna...
Open real soon, Tommy, real soon.
They have to go to court for that?
They sure do, Tommy.
And what's left this, Julie, Julie Mike, Angela wants to know when.
We all wanna know, Tommy. We all wanna know.
Are there any other public comments? Bernie?
Good evening, everyone, board and Madam Mayor. I'm gonna take a very short thing. I think you're doing a fairly good job. I really appreciated Director Bridge's report tonight. There's only one thing missing on that report. And that's the association with dollars by department. And to that, I had noticed that in the consent agenda, the best we could do is having a report as of November 30th, not December 31st. So I think these things need to merge together so that the strategic plans reports and the financials come together so we know what we've done, how much we've done, and what it costs us to get it done. In regards to the, I appreciate doing the scanning. But it's not gonna solve all problems. I think you're gonna have to take a look at purchase orders or purchase requisitions in the future so that you can get ahead of the game so that you can close your months on time. Now, I wanna divert to a little politics. And I think you're doing a good job. You're getting there. These are some quotes from a person that lives, really had lived a long time ago from this particular area. He says, "Cheap cigars come in handy. They stifle the odor of cheap politicians." He also said that if we are to have another contest in the near future of our national existence, I predict that the dividing line will not be the Mason Dixon, but between patriotism and intelligence on one side and superstition, ambition, and ignorance on the other." Ulysses S. Grant quoted that. He also said, "I would suggest a taxation on all property equally, whether church or corporation." And there are a few more things that, oh, the last one is, "You can violate the law, and banks may violate the law and be sustained in doing so. But the President of the United States cannot violate the law." And he was a president. So some very interesting things that date a very long time ago. Something to pounder over and think about. And Mr. Boyer, I forgot to bring in my pink snout. I was gonna share it with you. Okay?
Okay, your time is...
We used to live very close to each other in Virginia. And the commanders have won and are gonna be in the playoffs. And at one point in time, they were called the Hogs. And I think you probably are a Redskins fan.
Is there any other public comment this evening? If not, will entertain a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
A motion made by Alderman Sellers, seconded by Alderman Shadle. All those in favor?